Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for April 12th. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Ann Mayer?
Here.
Carol Chelman?
Here.
Rebecca Remison?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Shulman?
Here.
Tom Martin?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Clay Haywood?
Here.
Lynda Brulette?
Savannah Fedaro?
Here.
Very good. If you'll join me for a moment of silent reflection?
Yes, I'd like to, in regards to the silent reflection tonight, there are -- the nursing department of Portsmouth School District has taken a horrible hit in the last two weeks. First of all, I'll mention that Barbara Pambukas, the elementary school nurse down at New Franklin, her father passed away in New York State this past week, and she's been with him or with her family at this time, and so, you know, keep Barbara Pambukas and her family in mind. And then secondarily, very large loss to the Portsmouth community, as well as Barbara Wynott Porter Soucy was a school nurse for the last 13 years, a former graduate of the class of 1976, and just a friend to so many, passed away with a long, long battle of cancer. She'd been battling this last bout of cancer for the last three years. She had had it seven years prior to that, and, you know, if you knew Barbara, it was always amazing that she put the kids before anything, and that proved right up to the last period of time that she spent with us. She made it right up to Christmas, and from that time on, she did spend time at home, but the weekend before her passing, she decided to let it be known that she would not be coming back and would die the following Monday. So if we can keep them in mind.
We will. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March 22nd, 2011?
Second.
On second. Any discussion about that?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, the first thing we have coming up is a public hearing. So one of the things I want to say is that we left something off the agenda, so we're going to combine these two things. Usually, we also have a public commentary period. So I think if people want to come up and speak when the public hearings open about something other than what the public hearing's about, I think that would be fine. But we need to make sure we try to keep it back on the agenda. It was just accidentally left out. And so, the way we're going to proceed this evening before the public hearing starts is we're going to have a presentation by Kathleen Dwyer, but I would just like to make, maybe take one minute to make a couple of statements about the school board and how we deal with policies in general. So, setting policy is one of the three main legal requirements of a school board, the other two being voting on the budget and the hiring of the school superintendent. The school board, Portsmouth School Board does its business mostly through the use of committee work, and so we have a number of committees. The Policy Committee is one of them. They meet at least once a week, maybe every three to four weeks, I'm sorry, once a month, maybe every three weeks to a month. And the Policy Committee is responsible for working with the superintendent, and in this case, too, over the last couple of years, with the attorney in crafting school board policies. So, just if you remember, when Superintendent McDonough came on board, one of the things that we asked him to do was to engage at that time the New Hampshire School Boards Association and conduct, and have them conduct for us a policy review. Our policies had not been looked at for a long period of time. We were still in the process of trying to update them, and we got back some great information about which policies, some which we are legally required to have that we didn't have, so this process has really picked up over the last two years of having more policies coming out, especially ones that legally we need to have. And oftentimes, there are state and federal statutes that are referred to in policies, so it's helpful to have an attorney present as well. And the policy work is ongoing. It's once a month roughly, but it, there's always policies and they need to come up for review. So the Policy Committee crafts the policy and then comes and recommends whatever they've come up with to the school board. So when it comes out of the Policy Committee, it comes to the school board, and we see it oftentimes, maybe, maybe three or four days before it's made available to the community. We get our informational packets on a Friday, and we oftentimes have the school board meeting on a Tuesday. So this, so the, this particular policy that we're talking about this evening came to us at a first reading. Many on the board hadn't seen it. It came out of the Policy Committee. And the board has a process in place to review policies. It comes through the first, first reading. It gives us an opportunity to, to look at it more closely together as a group, to talk about it if people feel that we need to talk about it, understand where the policy came from, ask questions of members of the Policy Committee, and then there's a number of different actions we can take. We can, we can actually send, we can vote it down, we can send it back to the Policy Committee to be reworked, we could suggest new language. And then, the other thing is, so tonight, we'll begin our presentation with Kathleen Dwyer, the school board attorney. As we all try to begin to understand what this policy says, what the questions were raised as to initially what brought this policy conversation around, we'll have the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, the school board will have a work session, and we'll just talk amongst ourselves and figure out how do we want to proceed? So, thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. As the chairman said, this policy came out of the Policy Committee for first reading in March, and there were a lot of questions raised, there was a lot of confusing information in the media, and so my purpose tonight is to walk you through the highlights of the revised policy, and at the end of which suggests some things that you might want to look at as far as amending the first draft that came through. And the way the Policy Committee works, and the way it worked in this situation, was to meet at least four times over the last six months and talk about this policy. We looked at other policies, other city of Portsmouth building use policies. We collected information, we met with other representatives of my office, and eventually, what went before his first reading was reported out. So, I'd like to start with what the purpose of the revised policy was. The policy that we currently have, it's called a building use policy, has not been looked at since the year 2000. So, it was certainly in the pipeline to be looked at because of its age. And that building use policy was originally developed when Peter Torry was here, and myself, when, and with the representative of the school board, when there were some struggles over who to charge, how to charge, if we should charge, and whether there should be a difference between a nonprofit and a for-profit. And so that policy came into being the first time in the 19, mid 1990s, and then it was further revised in the year 2000. The purpose of that policy was really primarily to figure out how to charge users. It didn't address some of the constitutional issues that the current draft before you really needed to be addressed. We also wanted to be mindful that the school department has a mission, and that mission has to come first. And particularly when you're figuring out who and when your buildings can be used, we need to make sure that the mission of educating children from kindergarten through grade 12, that the facilities are available for them and for instructional time and the related activities to schools. The policy took into account that there is a demand by members of different groups in the public, some communities, some larger and outside of our community, often come to the school and want to use your facilities, and the policy that was drafted specifically designated rooms that would be available for the use by the public after the school use was fulfilled. I think that kind of got lost in the discussion about first reading, that there, and we'll get to this in a few minutes, there are specific rooms and purposes for the public to be made The major provisions of the revised policy, again, are to make sure that school buildings and your athletic fields are dedicated to providing an education, an educational opportunities for children from kindergarten through grade 12, that instructional and school use are given priority over all other uses. That it specifically says, and this is where it gets legally technical, but this kind of policy needs that, that public school property is not an open public forum for expressive content, which we'll talk about in a second, except as permitted under the policy. That, again, protects your main mission, which is to educate students. Facilities are made available to local community organizations, youth-related organizations, school-sponsored groups, and the public during non-instructional time. So, the Policy Committee recognized that you have a lot of facilities that would be a benefit to many groups needing meeting space. The policy is organized with some definitions and who can use the buildings. We'll start with the use of local community organizations. By definition in the policy, where 75% of the membership are Portsmouth residents, and I provided in your packets some information on who's been using the space and who's been renting the space, but just pulled out some examples of groups that have used your space and would continue to use your space under the current policy. Portsmouth Listens, the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers, the Chamber of Commerce, the Sherburne Civic Association, and Compass Care are examples of local community organizations. There are also school-sponsored groups that use your facilities, and these, under the policy, are defined as activities offered only to students, families, and staff members of public schools. This would include Don Darrow Idol, which just happened last week, at the high school, Booster Clubs, the Harlem Wizards basketball game, SAT, Kaplan, and other testing services, and New Hampshire sports. Again, these are all ones that have used your facilities. Youth-related organizations are also permitted to use the facilities, and they are not school-sponsored groups, but ones that are cremated, created primarily for the benefit of youth under the age of 21. Again, that's tied to the population that you serve. And some examples of that, Portsmouth City Soccer Program, which is a hybrid rec and private club, uses the fields, and the boy and girl scouts use space in the schools. There are special considerations for use by the public that you need to think about when you're adopting policy in this area. There's First Amendment considerations, there's the legal notion of expressive content, and limited public forum. That word "limited" seemed to ignite a firestorm on, it's not to be read as a limitation. It's a limited public forum, and I'll talk about that in just a second. The First Amendment to the Constitution prohibits abridging the freedom of speech. Though there are reasonable time, place, and manner regulations that, one can use the famous example that you can't yell "fire" in a crowded movie theater, but generally, you know, we jealously protect the First Amendment freedoms, particularly freedom of speech. There are public forum areas owned by the government that are available for the public at large, and that's why they're public forum areas, such as sidewalks, streets, parks, things that you generally think of that the public freely uses and freely uses to express their right to free speech or speech-like conduct. Then you have the use of public buildings, which is not quite as open as the city street or the city sidewalk, and because you have meeting rooms, classrooms, auditoriums, different spaces inside buildings, and they, depending on the amount of public use that you allow, that creates what's called a limited public forum, where the public has a limited expectation to be able to use those build, those spaces inside public buildings. They're not as wide open as the street out front, and that use is called a limited public forum. So if we look at expressive content, going back to the First Amendment, if I'm just saying something, that's easy. We know it's speech, I'm talking, you can, you know, you can identify what that is. But the Supreme Court has interpreted the First Amendment over time, as different cases have come before it, to include the expression of ideas and emotions without the use of words, that they give the same protection as words. So that, under the law, has become known as symbolic or expressive speech or content, and they are protected under the First Amendment, just the same as if the words were being spoken. So when your public facilities are made available to the public, and that's an election, you have, you don't have a mandate, but if that's what a government decides to do, it has to make those spaces available to the use by the public without regard to the content of the particular speech or expression, if it's non-speech. And so we talked about that a little bit last time. Once you adopt a public, a limited public forum, then you have to do it in what's called a content-neutral way. And, and that way, if you have a policy that's being administered by your administration, they don't have to come to you with, if you create the limited public forum, they don't have to come to you, nor should they, with each particular request, because your job isn't then to decide which groups you like and which groups you don't, because you would have made that threshold decision that you want to create the limited public forum. So as I said, the, there is no absolute right of the public to use public facilities unless the government creates the limited public forum. It will exist under the policy when non-school-related groups meet on the school premises during non-instructional time. Again, that's woven throughout the policy, that we're going to protect our instructional time and school use time. So the term of "limited" here is really the creation, the conscious decision by the board or the Policy Committee in its recommendation, to create a space, and in fact, two spaces, without any limitation on the use as far as the content goes. So, we were creating the limited public space, it was not a limitation upon any use of the space. And that, again, that those spaces will be made available to public groups without regard to the content or mission of those groups. So under the revised policy, people who are not in kindergarten and through grade 12, that group that your, your mission is to educate, that would be everyone else. It's not the youth-sponsored groups that we talked about, not the community organizations that I talked about previously. So it would create a limited public forum for the use of these facilities during non-instructional time, and specifically create a space for expressive content. So as the committee looked at what's available, kind of determined you have two basic demands for your space, one by small groups and one by larger groups. So we tried to accommodate that by creating in the policy the limited public forum for groups of 25 people or under, and designated room 115A at the Portsmouth High School for those groups during non-instructional time, and the policy would specifically say for expressive content, and it would be subject to room availability and custodian availability. Rooms other than 115A are available during non-instructional times for the school-sponsored groups, the youth-related groups, and the local community organizations, and under the current charging scheme, they were not charged, subject to correction by the business administrator. Generally, there's no charge for use by those groups. There was also a space created for groups over 25, and it was determined that more than likely, most people would want, most groups of that size would, could be accommodated in the auditorium at the high school during, again, during non-instructional time for expressive content. And because of the uniqueness of the space and the kinds of historical requests that we've had for those spaces, it was recommended by the committee that the groups be allowed to use it one event per year, because there is a high demand for school use in that space to begin with. And there was a lot of discussion on the board, well, what does an event consist of? Because if a entertainment production was going to be put on to limit it to one day, didn't seem to accommodate those needs. So by definition in your policy, the, the event would include the setup time, rehearsal, if there was a performance over more than one, two, or several days, that would be considered a single event and a single use, even though it may actually be more than one day. Again, that would be subject to room and custodian availability. There's some technical, you know, you have the policy in front of you, and I'm sure you've read it, other provisions about if a group cancels, and I, they're more ministerial in nature, so I won't go over all of those, but I, as I told you the last time we were here, this, because it involves First Amendment, and it involves the freedom of expression and expressive content, that you need to carefully consider what you wanted your policy to be. And after having been through all this, and if any members of the public want to speak about it tonight, we'll take that feedback and relook at the policy. But the Policy Committee did meet after your last meeting and before this meeting, and we talked about whether or not you should expand the limited public forums that you, that were recommended at the high school, to each building having a small space and a large space for use. That might be something that you want to look at. Some uses of city schools are more neighborhood-oriented, so that might make sense. I provided you with some financial information that Mr. Bartlett's office got us on, whether or not you want to charge for the use. You can see the library takes a deposit. I've also provided you with their policy, that they refund in most circumstances. It's really not a huge moneymaker for the school department. There is some revenue, but, so that's something you might want to consider. It would make the administration of the policy a whole lot easier, but that's up to you to decide. You might want to consider whether or not you want to limit the number of times a small group could use a space. The library puts out a three-month calendar, so nobody can sign up and lock up the whole year, so they put it out for three months, and nobody, no one group can rent more than eight ti, can use more than eight times at the public library. So that might be something that you would want to consider. In going back over the uses, we might want to look at creating an additional definition for charitable organizations. As I look through the list of people that have actually used the space, there seems to be a lot of fundraisers that use space for running events, and that raise money for Diabetes Association and other charitable organizations like that, and I don't think we really address that in the policy. And the other thing on looking it over and taking some feedback, you might want to broaden a little bit the definition of school-sponsored groups, because some fundraisers that's a school-sponsored groups are open to the public and are, but are for, totally for the benefit of the school-sponsored group, but it's written pretty narrowly, so I think I would recommend that we broaden that language a little bit, so that, for instance, if the Wizards came in to do a basketball game, you certainly would want to sell tickets to members of the public to be able to raise money for whatever the sponsoring group is. So that is the long and short of the proposed policy. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You have any questions about the packet that went out? I'd be happy to address that.
Can I just suggest, so that, because I could see getting into the conversation, that maybe we actually have the public, have, let the public speak, and then we'd have all of our time to talk with you and ask questions?
Sure.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public forum on this, as I said, normally it would be just on this issue, but since we didn't really have a public commentary period listed on the agenda, I'll open it up for anyone who wants to speak about anything. So I have three, three names we'll start with. So Peter Samsic. And even though I just said your name, could you state your name in your address? Thank you.
Peter Samsic, 34 Swett Avenue. And I'm here actually representing myself, but I'm also have been asked to represent the Executive Committee of the Portsmouth Democrats, who I believe have sent a letter to you, our chairman Larry Drake. And I'd like to read something or excerpt some of that letter, because I think it's, highlights the, the feelings we have about this policy. "The Portsmouth Democrats treasure the reputation of Portsmouth as an open-minded city that acts fairly towards all our civic groups. We are therefore very dismayed to hear of the suggested restrictions proposed by the city of Portsmouth's legal department for the use of school facilities. These suggestion, restrictions refer to so-called expressive groups, for us, a very vague and undefined concept. Among the groups that were specifically mentioned were the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers, Democrats, Republicans, and the Ku Klux Klan. The legal justification to us seemed to be that these restrictions were necessary that, for Portsmouth residents, because they need to be protected from objectionable groups, for example, hate groups or other offensive organizations. This suggests to us that Portsmouth residents are unable to protect themselves from offensive but legal organizations." but legal organizations, and that the best protection to prohibit all such groups is to have no group have the right to use the facilities to express an opinion. We believe that that runs counter to the Constitution and First Amendment rights. Portsmouth Democrats therefore strongly object to such reasoning and restrictions. We support the right of the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers, local Democratic organizations, and Republican organizations, as well as local community organizations, to make full use of the school and city meetings rooms whenever these are available. These facilities are public property, paid for by the very same local taxpayers who also are members of local community organizations. These groups should have access to these areas. These grassroots organizations are the bedrock of our loyal, of our local democracy. They foster and encourage individuals to become active in our community, to be political, to be political and financial watchdogs, to staff the polling stations at election time, and to recruit candidates for elected office. It is in the public interest, therefore, to make it easier for these groups to meet. We strongly urge the City Council and the School Board to work together with the community and the local organizations to draft a uniform policy that applies not only to the schools but also to city facilities. And we believe that similar to the public library, which would be a good example to start with, this, these policies should be appropriate, fair, and respect the use of public meetings for all local groups." On a personal note, I just want to add to these comments from Larry Drake, that we are, Portsmouth has been targeted in the past by some local, not local, but national hate groups or other organizations. And we've always found that the community of Portsmouth, being what it is, never had a problem standing up for its own rights, and allowing people to have an opinion without resorting to unlawful means. Also, that this issue of the constitutionality and restricting free speech is obviously a very delicate affair. And for an institution like our school systems, I think we need to be aware of how the students perceive what this board does regarding restricting speech. This is certainly part of the educational experience to begin with. And when it comes to defining which groups can use the organization, the school facilities, I would also point out that there is lots of controversy around the Boy Scouts of America, for example, because of their restrictions against gay and lesbian youth. And I, as an Eagle Scout, can say that I have had, I have had an opportunity to weigh in and say that I'm not going to volunteer for that organization until they change their policy, even though I appreciated greatly when I was a scout myself. And incidentally, when I was a scout myself, they never had this policy, they never had an issue with it. They always had issues with adults, not with the students, or the children. So we'd like to ask you to consider looking at the city as a whole, together with the city officials, using the public library as an example. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next signed up is Martin Cameron.
Good evening, members of the School Board, Superintendent Martin Cameron, 469 Ocean Road, Portsmouth. I really don't have any technical questions, because up to this point, it hasn't gone into technicalities such as fees and so forth. It's just been covered in the presentation, but I guess that will be left up for you folks to decide if there will be fees, and who the fees would apply to, maybe some group, not another group, or whatever. But that's for you folks to hash it out. I'm not representing any group. I am a member of the Portsmouth Taxpayers. I'm a past president of the Taxpayers, as some people that have been on the board here for many years know. And I've had a good acquaintance and good relationship with schools and the superintendents, the principals and so forth, especially my longtime friend, Dr. Tracy. Everything was great. At that time, when I was president, we did use the Little Harbor School Auditorium for our meetings. We had a much larger group. I had as many as probably 400 to 500 members total in the city. So I was, had a very active group, and we were very, very strong. But, the only thing I can see, the presentation seems to be quite neutral, and I was kind of watching for the word "expressive group," I was watching for that word in particular, to see how that would apply. And it appears to me that it's fairly, it's, there's no, no specific, anything, not designated or expressed towards any group at all. It's quite, seems quite neutral, and I think that's the way we like it to be. I know the Taxpayers as a group are not expressive as far as anything political and so forth. We're strictly engaged in the finances of the city, and that's it, period, 100 percent. And that applies to the council, to the school board, to the police and fire commission and so forth. We're all interested in what the tax rate is going to be, and how the city survives from one year to the next. And also, we're quite involved with union contracts and so forth, because that's the basis for the, that's 90 percent of the budget. And the city, the school department is 50 percent of the budget. So, all the monies that we put in, I'm on my, right now, financing my third complete generation of students in a school, starting back in, I retired out of the Air Force in 1975, well, I retired in 76, I was still in, and, but I bought a home here in 1975. So right now, I'm on my third generation of students, and I still have, I see some people here are still with me. And that's all I really have to say. Oh, no, I have one thing I'd like to add, a very, a good note. I'd like to congratulate New Franklin School, the students, the teachers, and the principal for the success with their AWYP testing. I think that's a really, I wouldn't say remarkable, but it's an achievement, and to me, it's more important than winning in baseball, or football, or basketball. To me, that education to me is what really, really counts. So with that, I'd say, thank you.
Thank you. And the third person here on this list is Eileen Behan. You have nothing to say. Okay. So, but the mic is open for anybody who would like to come up and speak. I can wait. Just want to make sure people have the opportunity to think it over and say, oh yeah, I would like to say something. Okay. Well, normally, you know, the school board, we would have three rounds, but it doesn't seem like that there would be a great need for it. But if anyone would like to, who's already spoken, would like to say something else before we close this common, public hearing, I'll just keep that open. See? If you wait long enough, somebody will ask. Thank you.
Just a brief addition to what Martin just said. I'm also a member of the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers, but I consider myself part of lots of groups that are very expressive. And I don't think of expressive groups as being anything negative. It's another way of expressing your opinion, and it's, as we were just told by the legal counsel, it is a protected speech. So, whether we like it or not, this is the country we have, that's the Constitution we have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? So I will close the public commentary period of the hearing, I should say. And now, what I would actually ask the board is, we have on our agenda a conversation about this, that appears later, later, later down, and I'm wondering if people would be willing to have this, bring it up on the agenda and actually have this conversation now. So, it makes sense to do that. So if I don't see any, or hear any objections to that, why don't we do that? So, under the old business B, 9B, there was workshop use of school facilities, so why don't we open it up? And now, if people have questions for Kathleen, we can sort of begin this conversation. Rebecca.
Hi. So I'm looking at the, what is supposed to be the current policy, and I noticed that on the third page, it has dates from 2009, but if it hasn't been looked at since the year 2000, I don't understand what those are doing.
One is the policy, and one is the rate page, so the policy...
Is only the first two pages.
Correct.
And there, so there is no rate that existed in 2000?
Not in the policy, no. That, and I should back up. Part of the policy review process was, in large part, also generated by the fact that over time, the practice and the policy had just morphed into different things. So, for instance, the rate schedule here, in its current form, came after the year 2001, when the policy was last looked at.
So, you said that this policy was put in place in 2000 because there wasn't a fee schedule, so then, nothing had happened until later?
In the mid-'90s, the business office was wrestling with increased demands and requests for use, and whether or not we should charge, and how they should charge. It was kind of ad hoc way back then. You could get away with a lot more back then than you can now. And, so, Peter Torrey came to the policy committee and wanted to look at building use and make it more formal, and come up with a way to, so that everybody would know who's going to get charged what. So basically, the original policy was for that purpose.
Okay, but there is no original rate schedule. We were given...
There was one back then, and it had, it had a laundry list, as I recall. If you wanted to rent the auditorium, it cost X if you were a profit group, or for-profit group, and nonprofits had a different rate. Maybe Steve could, maybe Steve could address how this current schedule came into being.
I just, I'm, I'm just confused, because it says this is the current existing, anyway, I guess that's...
Well, that's part of the problem, Rebecca, that's what we were trying to fix.
Okay, and so, so then, beside the rate schedule, what are some of the problems with the existing year 2000 policy? And my recollection, and then it's also provided here in the notes, that the review of this policy was triggered over a grievance about overtime. And I'm looking at that, and that seems like a personnel issue, not a policy issue, that whoever is in charge of the people doing this overtime, they need to deal with that. We shouldn't be crafting a policy about it. So, are there other issues that our existing policy has created? Are there other groups that have come in? I just, when you take away all of the emotion and all of the limited forum expressive content, it seems that it's, it doesn't, we don't have a current fee schedule. If we do have one, it's not always applied, and that also seems like a personnel issue. And that overtime of this one specific building... See, it's like, those are the core issues, and we're not addressing them. And then we get into this, it has to be less than 25 people, and if it's more than 25 people, and it's, it's turning into this, something that it doesn't need to be. And, and I just, I'm reading the first two pages of the original policy, and the first paragraph is this wonderful opening welcoming statement, that we recognize the schools belong to the community. And then, the new policy is, it's not public forum, and you can't do this, and you can't do that. And it just seems to have changed from an overtime issue into an expressive content issue.
The overtime issue triggered a review. The policy wasn't revised, and the changes to it were not in response to how you handle overtime or personnel matters. What it did highlight was the increased demands, the increased requests that the school department was having for use of its space, and how you would make that space legally available to members of the public while reserving the uses that, for local youth organizations, for community organizations, and the like.
And I, and I understand that instructional and school use are given priority. I mean, that, that goes without saying, but, I mean, I don't care who uses it.
I mean, you're a board member, you're allowed to have that.
Well, I, but, so I don't unders, I mean, so then we should have just been charging this monthly fee for this group to come in, and that's the end of the story. I mean, it doesn't matter what they're doing, what they're talking about, as long as it's not impeding in the way of school and instructional use, which I don't believe this group was, or we wouldn't be allowing them to do it. And, so I just, it doesn't make sense. It seems a little like we're, we're trying to close it down. I know you've done a good job explaining that limited isn't really limited, that it's much more open, and I think that is a wonderful thing for us all to understand. But if we are getting more requests, then that's great, that's a source of revenue.
Okay.
And just trying to find out why it's not an expressive content issue, and it's not just a personnel, who's getting overtime, and let's charge the proper amount. I mean, if that's what the issue is...
That's an issue. You also have, the old policy doesn't address any of the constitutional issues that are out there, and that at, at any point in time could have become problematic for the board by way of litigation, if you said no to a group, how you handled a particular request. So, it, as I said, the policy is 10 years plus old, and it needed to be looked at.
So closing it down will provide us more protection than just opening it up?
Rebecca, just, because there's other people waiting. So, you've asked that question, let's come back to that, I'll put your name back on the list, we can bring it back up again. I just want to have, let other people have a chance to talk as well. Leslie.
So, I think, Rebecca, one of the things that you're getting hung up on in the beginning of the policy is the restrictive versus permissive. And the original policy was, I think, you're right, that paragraph is kind of welcoming, and maybe we need to put that paragraph back in. I think the, what I hear you stuck on, though, is that we're trying to limit or control something, and we're not. We're simply trying to organize where people meet. Nowhere in this policy does it say anyone is left out or isn't going to be able to use it. We're just trying to say, these are the spaces that we have the staff people to take care of, that we have the space for, and organize it so that it's not just a free-for-all. So, I guess, I just want to say, we're not trying to limit it, or tell anybody that they can't come. There's nowhere in there that says anything about, you know, this group can't come, but this group can. We can't do that. That's the point of what Kathleen is saying, that we can't control expressive speech. So, I'm not sure why you think that we're trying to control that. We're not. We're just trying to organize where it happens. And Kathleen had some really helpful things at the end of her presentation. We want to make changes to this, there are changes to be made to this, there's no question. She had really good ideas, one of which is, maybe every school needs to have a large and a small room. Maybe every school needs to provide that space for people. Maybe we need to define more clearly what is a charitable group, who we charge and who we don't charge. Maybe we don't charge anybody. You know, the reality is, we make about $10,000 a year on renting our facilities. We're not rolling in the big dough because we're renting our facilities. So, you know, I guess I just want you to understand that we're not trying to limit anything in any way. Limited, as I understand it from Kathleen, refers to limiting the space, not what you're saying, or how you're saying it, or anything like that.
And since Rebecca, we've gotten requests very recently to use the auditorium at the high school... high school every single week. The request was for 52 weeks a year. So without any kind of roadmap of how we're going to handle that, then you really just walk into the quicksand of the First Amendment, when you're going to start saying, "Well, no, we have to say no to you," but then if we say yes to somebody else who only wants it 22 times. So if you have it in your policy, what's available? And then if you meet the criteria, and you get there first, or you get, you know, however, then the policy as it's written doesn't care who's using it.
So Kent, you were up next, but I actually wanted to, I had my name down. Because I have burning questions. I'll pass the book down, you can see. So the previous policy says nothing about this limited public forum.
Correct.
Nothing. So because there's nothing in there that says that any part of this building may be used in that way, how did, historically, how did the board handle when any kind of a request came in that might be of a political nature, for example?
Well, and that, I'm glad you asked that question. Some requests came in and are routinely handled by the administration, using the policy as it is. You have had-
Making an arbitrary decision?
Well, hopefully not arbitrary, but trying to be consistent in the requests that it granted. There were some that came to the board, most notably when John Edwards came and his campaign in the last go-round of the presidential election. The board considered that, I think Attorney Sullivan was here at the time, instructed the board as to, in granting the request, you would be creating a public forum, and the board voted to grant that request. And he did use, I think it was, space at Little Harbor.
So-
So in granting that request, that forum was created by a vote rather than under a particular policy.
And so, and I'll come back with another question, but just to point out that, in the packet that you handed us, so for example, and this goes to some of the comments from the public about trying to do a citywide. So in the current city, what do they call the group that sits here? City Council, sorry.
Not on Tuesdays.
So according to the current city council policy, no place, this room, and no place in the city is actually a public forum, according to what you gave us.
In this building, that's correct.
In this building. So there is no opportunity for any of those groups to come in here and use this space unless the city council decided to have a limited public forum. So in that sense, the word limited means we're allowing you to use it for a certain amount of time or in a certain way.
Or certain.
The other thing is Prescott Park, and, I mean, the date, maybe this is wrong, but the date on this is just like two weeks ago, three weeks ago. This Prescott Park policy, March 23rd, 2011?
No, that's when I printed it.
That's when you printed it. Because it's right up top here, so it's a little confusing.
It was approved.
Okay, so I misread that.
But it's not an old policy, though.
It's not an old policy either. Okay, so would you say that the city as a whole, I mean, based on, you know, the legal office coming to us with these suggestions, is trying to come up with some sort of a broad citywide understanding of public use of space? Or is this specifically targeting just for the schools and every other institution, cultural, civic is different?
I would say that there isn't an effort to have a citywide facility use policy, because all the facilities are unique and different. And as you can see from the three I provided you, the city council has determined in this building, there is no public forum, limited or otherwise. Prescott Park has, for many, many years, jealously regarded that stage area as not a limited public forum, and specifically created a public forum area in the parking lot over by Pier 2. So you see when the presidential candidates come, or somebody wants a pretty backdrop, that's where those activities take place. They can't take place in the flower garden, they can't take place on the stage. The library, on the other hand, which, and you have to look at each one, I keep getting back to mission. What is the mission of each particular arm of government? Wants the free open expression available in the library, and has, kind of similar to what is in the recommended policy for the school, a larger group space and a smaller group space. And they organize it by limiting the number of times you can use it, trying to make it generally available for as many groups as possible, and that nobody can lock up the whole year. So-
Thank you. Kent, yes?
It'll take a couple minutes. Behind us is a thing, a beautiful plaque, and it says, "Settled in 1623." Do you know why we were settled in 1623? Because government decided it was going to control areas of where freedom of speech and how it could be done in those European countries, not just England, those of the Netherlands, and so forth. And I think we should be surprised that this room itself is not sometimes used for groups. I'm not going to get into the word of expressive, because I think that this is a new cliche. And Kathleen, you gave me a call and said, you know, and I know some of it was in tongue-in-cheek, now look what you did by, you know, sort of stirring the pot a couple of weeks ago. And I'm damn proud of it. Because there are some things that we're doing here, not just within the school system, that kind of get to me. I want to correct a couple of things that have been said tonight. First of all, there's always been a policy committee. In fact, Nancy Craig, who was on the board for two terms, did an outstanding job bringing it, because you know Nancy, Kathleen, you sat with Nancy Craig, and there were over 25 different policy changes during her time of being the chair of that committee that she brought forth. And I happened to see her the other day, and she wanted to make sure that that was known, that the policy committee is nothing new, that it has gone along. The other thing that I'm a little surprised tonight was, is that in your history, you're not mentioning prior to, I think it was 2002, 2003, there used to be a rental committee. The rental committee met on a regular basis, and you were a member of that committee back then. Peter Torrey, there was an absolute, I don't know, I'm getting kind of a funny eye from you, Kathleen, but-
Well, I don't remember sitting on that.
Well, there was a rental committee, and we met on a monthly basis. It was brought forth under Charlie Griffin because we ran into an issue with the gun show. Like, one of the first things was the rental of the gun show, and I think you can kind of remember some of that, and along with the Boy Scouts, it was brought up, you know, how do we deal with this? And the rental committee eventually was dissolved for a number of reasons, just basically because what we were doing was bringing it to the full board, and the full discussion kind of happened anyway. But I then also take issue in that, you know, stating, a statement that was brought up that some of that part was not understood by the board about the limited use and so forth areas. I understood it extremely well. In fact, I'll give you the math here in just a second. And so I do take issue that, you know, that we didn't quite understand what it said. I blatantly understand it, and I'll go further on. What we are doing, unless, and I do know I heard mention, but I want to make sure also, point of order tonight, Mr. Chairman, that we did receive this booklet, but no board member received a printout of the presentation prior. And we had made it a goal that all information that was going to be presented to the board would be given to us, and I have no copy-
And if I could address that, that was the very first PowerPoint presentation I ever created, and I didn't finish it till today with the assistance of my junior at UNH, so I apologize to the board if you didn't get it ahead of time.
I would like a copy of that, because it does highlight some of the things, I think, when we take this back to look at. I mean, it was helpful in-
I'd be glad to get it.
Some things made my eyes open up, and some things, you know, were clarifications. So the issue at hand isn't just, you know, that we're limited. What we're saying is that you're taking, and please, I've done the math, let's just say it's 20-odd rooms, 15 rooms in each building, and you're saying now that we're going to get down to two rooms if we don't change the policy, and I am glad to hear there's been discussion that you might look at it broader, to over 200 rooms. You're taking two rooms to 200 rooms off the table. That's a problem. Because if you do the math, and you have 30 groups that all want it in the same night, the same time period, and we say, "Well, we only have these two rooms that we utilize this for," we're going to run into a major issue of fairness of when we can rent it versus having, "Well, tonight, the auditorium isn't available, ah, but the middle school new gym is," or "The new library at the middle school," whatever it may be. We're going to have another beautiful facility, I hope, downtown here, the new middle school coming in, and we're not giving that any credence to how we might want to put that in the mix.
Well, Kent, we are, we specifically, in between the last meeting and this meeting, as I said, the policy committee did talk about broadening and making more large and smaller spaces.
I mentioned that, that it may be broadening it, but I still think you run into a management issue versus how it- You're not going to get an argument on me, and I would like to answer the rate question, because there's always been charges for groups to use the schools as long as, before I was even on the board, which is now 18-plus years, there's always been some use fee. There used to be a very fine one, it was three categories, and then we broadened it.
Thinking way back in the nineties, right.
So, again, I get back to, you know, the number of rooms. Well, and I think it was well said by one of the board members here, is that, you know, if you've got 25 members, you have this. If you have over 25, you get to go to the auditorium. Anybody ever sit here in the auditorium and see 60 people sitting in the auditorium?
Yeah.
Yeah? Anybody seen it when we had the bullying? It doesn't work. You've got to have something in between people. The small auditorium works very well. When you put anything under 300 people in the big auditorium, it doesn't look too hot. It isn't-
I think, you know, I'm a little bit frustrated, because I feel like we're getting into an argument situation. Fine, let's change it, let's make it three rooms.
Well, that's what we're doing. We're discussing. It's on the table tonight.
But it doesn't feel like it's a discussion, it feels like people are frustrated.
He's just throwing out suggestions.
Yeah, no, it's thrown out.
Fine, I think that's a good idea. Let's make three different-sized rooms.
Yeah. And I don't, well, you see, I will have a problem if we say we limit any rooms at any time, because that's not going to work somewhere down the road. It may be four or five years from now, it may be 20 years from now. Somewhere, you're going to have a larger amount of people maybe wanting to use it. And that's where I find difficulty of taking what, because what I don't hear is, and again, I respect what the policy committee's done, but it's what has worked in there. We haven't had an onslaught of these controversial groups. When politicians comes in, we're in the cycle now, we're going to start hearing from the politicians and so forth. I don't have to go listen to them if we want to rent them. We've built these facilities to be used. It was one of the sales tactics to get approval by the taxpayers of the city of Portsmouth, is to say, "As we rebuild these facilities, we will make them available." That was a major selling point towards the middle school. When we built the middle school, we said, "We want civic groups in there." There is documentation and minutes from this board that we would open the doors that way. There were pass notes when the high school was built.
The policy does include community organizations.
And I hope you know how to say which is a community group, because I'm not quite sure I ever want to be the one that says, "They're a community group," and they're not. I think the example of the Boy Scouts is an excellent one. I consider them a great civic duty, committee or organization out there. I don't agree with their, in respects to their gay and lesbian stance, but I would consider them a civic group. So I'm not quite sure who's going to be that gatekeeper, and I think that's going to run us into problems. So again, that's one of the two issues that you put out there. And again, I'll just say, there's 52 weeks in the year. I would rather see our buildings being better utilized and safely utilized. Not sure where we're going to go on this. I know we're going to have to have another revision of this and look at it when it comes down to the rates and so forth, or the user fees, however we want to label that. I'll strongly support that these groups, if there has to be a deposit given, the deposit should come in before the group can get, maybe the deposit is 90%, and then they only owe us 10%. Because I know dear Mr. Edwards still owes us a lump of money, along with other politicians, I believe. So, thank you very much for the floor.
Thank you. Tom, Carol, do you have the end?
I just want to make sure that we understand that the policy, the way I see this policy, in terms of getting something revised, you know, the schools are open to the public. And I think the limited component here really feeds into the fact that our mission here is to educate the kids. And, you know, we have a tightened budget, we have a lot of things that have constrained our ability to execute on the mission. We've got limited resources, we're losing staff this year, and yet we want to sit there and say, "You know what, let's have everyone rent all the facilities. Let's hire some more staff, let's clean all these rooms and make sure they're ready for the students." You know, having a limited space where we sit there and say, "You know what, we'll let the public use a couple buildings, because that's what we can maintain." You know, this is not a revenue opportunity, we're not a conference center. This is an educational facility focused on educating kids. And yes, let's have it open for the public, but let's do it reasonably and make sure that we are not jeopardizing the mission that we have. So have the public open. Let them use a certain room here, let them use the auditorium, let them say whatever they want to say. But let's just have a policy that, one, covers the costs, because we're going to have to have people. I mean, I don't think the Association of Portsmouth taxpayers want us letting other people use the facility and spending city taxpayer money to clean the building and make sure it's available for everybody. I think that's absolutely atrocious. So I want to make sure we're focused on the mission at hand, which is educating the students, making sure we are equipped, and if we need a policy that lets the public use the facility, so be it. Let's figure it out. Let's figure out, is it one building, two buildings? I don't care. But I want to make sure that we do not lose track of where we're focused. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Kathleen, I sincerely thank you for all your efforts you've done with this. I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you put together tonight for us. Couple of questions, couple of comments. The issue with the janitor, the overtime issue, you said that was a catalyst for looking, one of the catalysts?
One of them, yes.
One of the catalysts for looking at this. The policy that you did draft, does that address that issue? And if so, how?
Because we've delineated the space and limited the number of times, we wouldn't have that intensity of use and the need to provide that level of staffing.
Okay, so-
That was an every-week use.
Okay, so the thinking then is, if we put it in a certain space and we limit the times it can be used, then it won't cause us to have to pay somebody overtime to clean it and take care of it? Is that the thinking?
Correct. And you see, it's when custodial staff is available, and one of the things the policy committee talked about was, most of the facilities have custodial staff at night, so to not let the use extend beyond when the building would be staffed.
Okay.
So if you have somebody there anyway-
So, so the hours would relate-
Sundays, for instance, we didn't have anybody there.
But there isn't anything about hours in here, time of day that it goes to?
No, other than when room is available and custodial staff is available.
Okay, so the, I'm just trying to figure out how you're, I see what you're trying to say, but it's not making complete sense to me.
Well, some of it is the policy, and there will be procedures or the, you know, the schedule, the mechanics of how you do it, which aren't part of the policy, which would address some of those things.
Right, but, okay, but Kathleen, what I'm wrestling with is, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, a restriction, a limitation, doesn't have anything to do with content, but a restriction or a limitation, a time, hour, frequency, in my mind, has to relate to some legitimate government purpose of running our schools, or some legitimate government issue, not because we just want to limit it, because we've just decided-
You want to organize it, is how I've described it.
It can't be arbitrary, it has to be related to a specific purpose. So if you came to me and you were saying, "We need to limit it X, Y, and Z, because that's when we have janitors," then I might say that makes sense. But if you're telling me, "We're going to limit it here and there," but it doesn't necessarily relate to the hours the janitors work. And the other comment I have is, and this is somewhat to the comments that were just made, couldn't we charge some of these organizations for whatever it costs us to clean? We could even hire a service?
We do.
Well, then there is no issue with, I thought I was hearing that there was an issue with letting people use our facilities frequently was costing us money and getting, and taking us away from our primary purpose, which is to educate kids. But if we can just charge them for the cost of cleaning, then it makes no difference. We don't really have to limit them. What I'm trying to get at, I- to limit them. What I'm trying to get at, I said this at the other meeting, I, the problem I have with this policy is it is just not, does not specifically address practical, legitimate issues regarding use. It's not narrowly tailored. And I do believe that these buildings somewhat, as Kent was saying, I believe these are the taxpayers' buildings, and they've paid for them. And I agree with Kent. The middle school was definitely, one of the arguments was, keep it downtown, spend a lot of money renovating it, because it's local and it's central, and people will use it, other organizations. And as we get on in society here, it's not sustainable to not use a building as often as possible. You know, we want to air condition the middle school, right? We want the taxpayers to pay for that. Well, now we need to use it in the summer, and we need to use it at night. And we've already built the buildings. They've already used up the land. Let's be sustainable and use the buildings as frequently as possible. Make ourselves a city that is very open to groups that want to come in and, you know, raise ideas and concepts, and, you know, make it as open as possible. And then limit it just in a very specifically narrowly tailored way to address some practical issues. I mean, if you tell me it's interfering with schools, I would say restrict it, limit it, in a heartbeat. If you're telling me we can't afford it, I'd say restrict it in a heartbeat. But if you're telling me, well, groups with twenty-five or more, they can only get this building, and groups with this can only get that, and where, why? You know, it doesn't, really doesn't make sense. But I am pleased to hear that you're considering each building having a big and a small room. I think that's a huge improvement. But another comment on the original policy, it's interesting, limited public forum is not mentioned in it.
That's correct.
Right? And I'm not even sure, I think that law was in existence at the time that this was drafted, but I'm not positive on that. But you may know better than I do.
It was, the purpose of getting that building use policy back then was to enable a rate and a charging mechanism for the groups that were asking for use of the schools.
Right.
There was very minimal, if any, consideration of the constitutional issues.
Right, but what I think is interesting is that in this policy, limited public forum and expressive content is not mentioned in it. And yet, when I read this, I actually think this is more protective than what you've drafted. And I don't think you have to have the words limited public use in the policy for it to be constitutional. You just have to know what limited, limited public forum is, when you have it, and what you can and can't do. But you don't have to have those words in the policy. And I actually think that this original policy is pretty well-written, and is a pretty, there's some phrases in it that are a little bit old, but I think it's not such a bad policy. And I think it would make more sense to work off of this, and work off maybe what the library's doing, their policy, and work off those policies, and create something that is more open. And, you know, you use this term, limited public forum, and you want everybody to think it's not limited, but...
Because it's not.
But it, but it's called limited public forum.
I didn't make that term up.
No, I know. I know you didn't. I understand that completely. I know what you're saying. I'm just saying that it's not a great term. It's not your fault. It's not a great term, because it's not, doesn't sound open. But I'm just saying, I think the other policy, the old policy, did not in any way, I've read it several times, it did not infringe on free speech. It did not try to regulate based on content. It would have passed constitutional muster. And I think this policy could be worded differently. And, you know, I don't know what the process is from here. I think this is going to come back to policy.
It'll come back to us. You're on that committee with us.
Right, so maybe we can have a further discussion. But I do appreciate everything you've done, and I think that it, some of the terminology is confusing, and I think that's some of the issue.
Kent, you had made a suggestion at the last meeting that maybe the ACLU should take a look at the policy, and they did request a copy.
I'm sorry, didn't quite hear you.
I think at the last meeting, you indicated that it might be good to have the ACLU take a look at this policy, and they did, actually probably because of the newspaper articles, contacted me and asked for a copy, which I did provide them. And they did get back to me, they don't give legal opinions on the constitutionality of things, but she did indicate that she felt that the policy was content neutral, which would be their base to object or not.
Okay, so, thank you.
Just a quick, something that I meant to mention to you, Kathleen, was the, when we rent out to a religious organization, are we charging them or not charging them?
They were charged, yes.
They were charged, and under this new policy, it would be the same thing. A religious organization would be charged.
It wouldn't matter what the organization was. By creating that limited public forum, and if you make a decision you want to have a for-profit or a nonprofit rate, the rate schedules a separate discussion than the use discussion. And just to get back to where you started, public buildings and public school buildings, there is no constitutional right for the public to use them for things other than what the mission was of the building. Then it's up to government to decide how far and to what extent they want to make it open. And I hear varying ends of the spectrum here, which is, you know, how the process is supposed to work, so that you, as the policymakers, can decide which direction you want to go. But I just want to be clear that legally, there is no public right to use the building as a public forum or any other forum. It's...
Okay. I have Rebecca, and then Ann, and then maybe we can begin to wrap it up.
So in looking at the rental use rates and costs, it talks about other buildings besides the high school, cafeteria, elementary, gym. And so I would assume that'd be Dondero, New Franklin, Little Harbor. I think having the Sherburne School available for that neighborhood group, I think broadening this certainly makes sense. Adding the cafetorium at the middle school makes sense. And so we sort of already are doing that, having not just the high school. In this current rental use rates and costs, you sort of allow for that. And I think one of the, one of the pieces that's, that's hard to swallow is, is in your draft, section four, requirements for school facility use by public. And then you talk about less than twenty-five people, more than twenty-five people. If we just, and that's a restriction, how many people, you can only use it one time a year if it's more than twenty-five people. And then I look at the libraries and reservation of meeting rooms, and it's so simple. In order to serve the needs of the many groups in Portsmouth, Portsmouth, limits are placed. No group or organization may reserve a room more than three months in advance, or eight times in a calendar year. And it doesn't talk about the size of how many people. It doesn't limit you to one time a year. So I wonder if we just get rid of, in section four, these two paragraphs about the number of people, and just say, look, first come, first served. Every three months, we open it up, and if you come, then that's great. And then we're not restricting based on size. We're not restricting to one time a year. And we have these rates for all the different things, all the different areas.
Right. So that's your suggestion for the policy?
So, I mean, it just seems like that would streamline, then we are not talking about limited, doesn't mean limited, and...
Once you open it, you have, like it or not, like the terminology or not, when you establish the use, you are creating a limited public forum.
Right, and I think that's what we want to do. I mean, that's what, you, we're making a limited open forum in room 115A. But then, we're, can't we say we're making a limited open forum in the gymnasium with seating?
Yes, you can.
And it's this. And that's what the rental use rate is. So we're protecting ourselves that way, that we're making it a limited open forum, and I think that's, that's the big discussion, First Amendment, all that. We're making, we're creating this space for people to come. And similar to Prescott Park, it's this area. It's either the gym, or the auditorium, or the little theater, or so on.
Well, that's what you collectively need to decide what spaces you want to include in the public, limited public forum.
And then we're not getting into the youth-related, or is it a local community, or is the membership base local people? I mean, I, that's the stuff we don't care about.
Well, those groups would get priority over other groups in the public.
And that's fine, and it's up to the administration. I mean, every, you know, to say, first comes school use, and then comes, and I just, I think by adding that in, by having those two paragraphs in, has just turned this into what it is. So, I mean, unless there's no...
Up to you all to determine.
...reason to not do that, and just, you know, the library, I mean, it's beautiful. It's, you know, you can't reserve it more than three months.
Okay.
Well, that's one of the, at the end, my suggestions, is you look at the number of times and how far out you want your calendar to go.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Ann?
The committee was really looking at the city policies and the library policies, and looking at the whole situation. A lot of things I've been hearing tonight are really more procedure than policy. So that a lot of the, what about this, what about that, this size, that size, all the rest, those things are procedure, and, and the policy is the umbrella. So the procedure will be dealt with at another time. I think a lot of the things about the library policy are really well-done, and so that somebody, one group, is not using every single opportunity. Back to the custodian issue, the issue really was mainly because it was being used on a weekend, which was requiring a great deal of overtime. And, and that was what kind of triggered all of that. The custodial issue, we're really not looking to make a lot of money. However, custodians do have a job to do at the school. And so it depends upon what the needs of the group are that's using the facility. If it's just a matter of having something set up and then just being a presence, then they can go along and do their work. But to expect them to be doing overtime, then, then they would have to be paid for that. So that's a lot of the issue. It's, it's a matter of how much time it takes, and if it takes them away from their primary responsibility, because we want those classrooms ready for students all the time. So I think if we concentrate on what's policy and what's procedure, I think we'll be fine.
So, I'd like to wrap this up, but I do have my own two last, couple last questions. So, when the school board, and this, when the, when the school department rents facilities out, and we raise whatever amount of money is in here, who actually gets that money? Does it come, do you know that?
City.
Does it come to the city, or does it come to the school board, school department?
Does that go back in your budget?
No, it goes...
To the city?
Just one point of clarification on the rental rates as well.
Okay.
There is a rental rate to use it. There's a usage fee. That is counted as revenue and goes back into the revenue stream for the general fund and goes to the city. It's not necessarily an expense offset increase that people like to think it is. Second of all, when we have groups that rent it, that are outside, we have to charge them for the cost of the custodians and security to, you know, to clean up the building after it's done. So that requires having a pool of custodians that's willing to work overtime in those situations. Thus, the clause that says custodial availability. One of the historical problems with having a rental every weekend for years was that the pool didn't want to, that was available, didn't want to work every single weekend. So it made it somewhat of a, a management issue in terms of controlling that. At one point in time, so it was, it was solved on a building basis amongst the custodial staff, and one person did it for a number of years, which eventually ran afoul of the contract language for the custodial contract. So that's why we had to make that adjustment. So it's all based on availability, and, and we do charge those groups, so that we're not spending taxpayer dollars for outside groups to, you know, clean the schools.
Thank you. So, so just two other quick things. So, one is, as I look at the library policy, it's clear even here that they do actually restrict, they may not call it community organizations or whatever, but it actually does say that anyone who wants to use the room must be Portsmouth-based, and any group not based in Portsmouth must actually show substantial connection to the city. So it's not open to anybody to walk in and use. It's still limited to the members of the community.
Correct.
So, and my, so my last question really is, so what, what are some of the constitutional issues that we could face if we actually don't clarify anything in this policy and just leave it as the night, as the 2001 policy is? And so what's, what's the problem?
Well, your staff is going to need some direction to respond to requests for use, which haven't all come before the board. And if each, if you want to be made aware of each one, then you're getting into constitutional deep water of deciding yes for some and no for others. So as the requests have come...
Right.
The limitations of the old policies, you know, are...
So short of your suggestion, we could say every room in every building is open for use?
You could do that. I wouldn't recommend that you do that, but you could.
Okay. All right. Wow. Thank you very much for your time. So maybe a, it seems clear that people would like to send it back to the policy committee.
I think we intended that it would come back.
Ready.
So can we make it formal with a motion to actually send this back to the policy committee, and then, you know?
And then it'll come back.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we send our, our attorney, Kathleen Dwyer, along with the policy back to, to restructure and do any work that she needs, that she feels that needs to be done to correct this policy.
We'll take into account, you know, all the discussion around the table, and then it's...
And I'll add that in there as well.
You second.
Well, I shouldn't, because I'm on the committee.
Okay.
Send it to myself.
Somebody not on the committee would be nice to second.
Second.
Thank you. Any, so, all in favor of sending this back to the policy committee?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation on a motion that will move item, because I know there's a groups, groups, plural, thing here from representing the school nutrition program portion, if they'll allow them, I think that's a larger portion sitting here, to move that up to this.
Okay, the old business. Okay. Is that okay?
Yes, and, and actually, if I may, I neglected to do this at the beginning, but as a result of an omission on my part, and because action is required by this board prior to a city council meeting on April 18th, I would ask that an additional item be added to the agenda this evening under new business, which is new business item B, which would be consideration and approval to transfer a middle school parcel that is no longer needed for school purposes to the city in accordance with RSA 1994-2. And I'll explain that later, but I, that was a mistake on my part. I should have brought it, I should have had it on this evening's agenda.
This is a time-sensitive.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, sure, we have a request to move the nutrition program up, so let's just see where we are on the agenda. And then maybe in a little bit, we could take a quick little break after this, if that's okay with everybody. So, we actually have quite a bit of work this evening. So we finished the public hearing, we finished our work discussion, so we'll move that up. We'll have the school nutrition program.
Yeah, so, members of the board, you have a food service preliminary report.
Right.
Essentially, we were charged back in February to look into opportunities in order to move the program forward by essentially going out and looking at the marketplace to see how school food service programs are run, ideally to improve the quality of our offerings, and thereby improve our participation and overall satisfaction in the school nutrition program. So we really have been about doing that work for the last four or five weeks. The threshold question for us was, you know, should the district continue to be a self-operation, or shall it put out an RFP for a food service contracted service provider? And if a self-operation, then what are the critical goals and responsibilities needed in a director's position? And if a contracted service provider, how... And if a contracted service provider, how will they, you know, provide us the control we feel we need, the creativity, the healthy choices I think folks are looking for? So I've provided you a report. I do want to say at the outset, I had some assistance from Mr. Bartlett. He was a lot of fun to travel with along the way. Mr. LaPage was very helpful. He actually brought in a, a local dietitian, and I, she may even be here this evening.
Yes.
Oh, hi, Eileen. Who, who provided us, you know, some input on our, she consulted with folks in the area, provided us some input on the revised job description, and also kind of provided us eight critical goals that would be key to any food service program, that wanted to highlight, you know, wellness, health, and, you know, connected to the school's curriculum. So there are eight goals that are in the report, I won't go through them all now. We also, we visited basically three self-ops and two contracted service providing schools. The most notable in our trip was to go out to Howard Union in Vermont, which is rather, a rather remarkable school district. They were actually losing some $85,000, $113,000 a year. The cafeteria was this dingy kind of dark place that had boxes, and wasn't an attractive place for students to come. It's actually a school of some, grade seven through eight, I believe, of some 780 students. And they had a culture and climate committee. They ultimately decided to hire a consultant and wanted to make a change in their food service program. And through the work of the consultant, they went in a different way, they actually hired a chef. And not only did they hire one chef, they hired a sous chef and a baker.
Wow.
And dramatically changed the way they do business there. There are an increased cost in the food that they offer, but it's, it's made from scratch. And it, it had an impact that reverberated throughout the school. And in fact, not to tell stories, I know it's getting late, but Mr. Zadovic happened to be at a, a secondary schools reform conference on Friday, and one of the schools presenting was this Howard Union. Steve put two and two together and realized it was all because of the changes in his food service program that brought about some of the changes around democracy and student leadership in their high school. So that's the most remarkable of them all. We did go to Rye, where we observed the elementary school there, and it's a self-op, and it serves healthy meals, and they, you know, and I'm not going to go through all the details, I'm sure you've read the report.
Mm-hmm.
The, the long and short of it, I guess, is ultimately, we're recommending, because it was Friday afternoon and I had to bring this to a close, no, I'm just kidding.
[laughing]
That, that we basically move forward with soliciting a, maintaining it as a self-operation. That you have basically adopted the job description we've included in this packet. We've, we've brought those additional goals and performance responsibilities to bear. And I think if we find the right person, somebody who has some experience, who's an enthusiastic director, I think they can move the program forward, albeit perhaps not dramatically overnight, but I think over time can, can do service well, much like Howard did. I think there are opportunities that Portsmouth presents, we're not Howard, we're not situated in the middle of, you know, with all those farms right around nearby, but there are multiple opportunities to do the kinds of things I think we want to see happen. You know, with the farm-to-school, perhaps engaging somebody like the Green Bean, we even had an opportunity to meet with those folks, Kent brought them over as well. I know Tom went on a trip with us. That's, that's our recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it. I don't want to ramble. I feel like I'm rambling.
Don't ramble. Kent.
Yeah, I want to say I appreciate the time that I spent with the superintendent, and actually even Steve, in, in one of the discussions with the owners of the Green Bean. And then, a great deal of time, again, we took great advantage of Ms. Bean. I really appreciate the time that she's spent. She actually went in and, and looked at a school lunch program. It was not the, the stellar type of meal you want to have that day, and I think this is where we're at, is that, you know, it's not the fault of those who work for us, they are given the product line of what we have. So, again, there's, there's no, you know, discussion about who's preparing it, or how it's being prepared necessarily, but what it is. And, and if you take a look at the eight goals that were given to us in, in the report, and I really appreciate the time. Also, Suzanne Sonnenborn was the other participant on that, so I want to make sure that the two women are given credit on that. I think one of the things, if, if we're going to go ahead and make a new stride, and I remember this highly in the last election, just two years ago, in Little Harbor School, in a political forum, and I think also at Don Darrow, I think those were the two, we were bombarded, what are you going to do to make sure that it's better? Again, it's not a reflection of who's there, it's how we, we do it. And I think if you take a look at those eight goals, that sets the, the foundation and framework for those that we might want to consider to be candidates. And again, I, I just think it's, it's a, a great opportunity for us to look at not only the individual, but how we're going to do better, because it is so important, K through 12, or actually, we should say it's even through the PEEP program through 12 grade, that nutrition, we don't take advantage, and I've said this not, I think I've said it at least two or three different groups, one of McDonald's greatest strides in the last 20 years, and they'll tell you it's one of the greatest profits, is this little thing that they've come up with, it's the oatmeal with the fruit on top, highly nutritious, highly desired, and it's a simplistic way to start a good day. And if you take a look at making sure that, goal number two, that, you know, children the variety of whole grains and foods to replace with refined grains and whole wheats and grains, it begins a process of thinking of how we do. You will see, I, I associate this very much like all-day kindergarten. If we hire and we start to turn around the food program, I truly believe you'll start to see better test scores, because if you go to school hungry, you go to school thinking of what you want to eat, the child comes first in this case, making sure he or she can think properly, and not worry about whether they're going to be hungry or not. The other thing that this deals with, which I know the school nurses deal with, I know, like, I said, I'd like to put Eileen Bean out of work, that there be no more obesity of children from the Portsmouth School District, because that's the other side of the coin, is, is that we don't give them a proper nutrition. So again, I want to thank the superintendent. I believe that one of the recommendations that I would ask is, is that members of this group that he met, and all these different people, be considered to be interviewers during the process of, of hiring, before it comes to us. So, taking it full advantage of it, and, and looking at the pool, because there is a good pool out there of these different, some are chef dietitians, and some are strict dietitians. I always say, if you look just a little bit around you, people now go to hospitals to get meals, which in earlier days, you'll think of, nobody would want to, when you were in the hospital, you didn't want to eat that stuff. You go to York Hospital, and people go to York Hospital to have a meal because the meal is so good. They do it at Exeter Hospital, and I don't know if they currently do it at Portsmouth, but because the meals are that good, people go into a hospital to go to the meal, and if you just think about it, a very short period of time ago, nobody wanted it, including the poor person sitting there with broken legs. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol, and then Tom and Ann.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll keep it brief, because I know it's getting late. Ed, I am just so impressed with how you handled this situation, the fact that you took the time to drive all, all the way over to Vermont. I know you were getting a free lunch, but-
Tom made me.
And, and thank you to Tom. I know, Tom, that was your idea to go, take him to Vermont, and I appreciate that. We are so fortunate to have you. I know you said you were rambling, you weren't rambling. Your enthusiasm is so obvious, your willingness to just have a completely open mind, and to see the connection, you and Steve, to see the connection between nutrition and how children do in school, and who they become as people, is the ultimate example of looking at the whole child. And I completely agree with, Kent, were you the one that was saying that we may see improvement in kindergarten?
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the research is just out there, that this makes a huge difference. And when we do our kneecaps, we have more nutritious snacks and things at school, and I think people have wondered if maybe that helped with the results. So, I just can't thank you enough, you've done so much for the Portsmouth School System, by the way you and Steve have approached this, and thank you to Tom and Kent for your efforts as well. Thank you very much.
So, I had Ann, and then Tom, sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for the self, self-op program.
So moved.
And I do appreciate how much, how much went into this. I, I love this, this sheet, that really gives us everything we need to know.
So moved.
Okay. So, continuing discussion, Tom, you had a-
Yeah, I just, one of the things that I really enjoyed participating in this process of finding out what we wanted to do, and the, the report, I think, really speaks volumes to the fact that, you know, the simple goals of wanting to run a, a system that is financially stable, that provides good nutrition, the, the pieces that were shocking were that it was not the, the components that Harwood originally set out to achieve that resulted. You know, they came out saying, we wanted to engage the local community, we wanted to cook food from scratch, and we wanted to be financially sustainable. You know, we're running a huge deficit. And what the principal told us, that I found so amazing, was that, you know, we went out, achieved these goals, but yet what happened was we changed the entire culture of the school. You know, we had kids that suddenly embraced the program, they were excited about the program, they had English students going out and interviewing people who were suppliers, they had photographers and art students doing murals and taking pictures, and inside the school, there are over 200 posters, pictures, and murals that were created by the students to create an atmosphere that reflected a lot of their beliefs. And one of the things that they had was this, this notion of Harwood Culinary Partners, that it was not just a service that was brought into the school, but it was a effort of partnerships with people in the community, parents, students, you know, colleagues, that really brought and changed the culture. And those are things that we're talking about doing here in our city, with our school. And to think that these could be some of the byproducts of taking and doing a self-op, I find very exciting. So, to take a look at the, the job description, I support moving forward with the motion, obviously, but I would make some comments to the, to the description, to say that I see the description as more of a Director of Food Service and Education versus Director of Nutrition. I see some of the, the responsibilities to be broader in terms of the education, and some of the requirements is to actually have someone who has a cooking background. So there are some other things that we can take a look at offline, I can make some suggestions, but, you know, I, I think those are things that we might just consider as we take a look at that person to hire or persons. Thank you.
Okay. Did anyone have their hand up? Okay, and then we'll take a vote. Yes.
I just wanted to say that, being in this area, there is so much fresh local available, and I think this community has really embraced it with organization Seacoast Local, and, and I can't wait until I don't have to make my son lunch every day anymore.
So, move the question, all in favor, accepting the recommendation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Let me get back on track. Okay. What's your recommendation?
I'm looking at my-
You want to send these guys home?
Administrator, see, I want to send them home.
Okay, so let's, let's move up the district reports.
Principal Collins, step up to the podium, please.
So much for that.
Thank you very much. Mr. McDonald said I have to keep it to five minutes, so that is certainly what my goal will be. Thank you. I, that was part of the deal, so I was going to ask Ann to do that for me anyway. Thank you very much for inviting me here this eve-
[laughing]
Oh, there we go. Thank you very much for inviting me here this evening, I truly do appreciate talking about Portsmouth High School. As you can see, I included a number of things in the packets regarding some of our events this year, and some of our accomplishments. Certainly proud of the gains that we've made in our, in our academic testing, making AYP and reading, some of the gains that we've made school-wide mathematics, but clearly we have areas to improve in those, in, with both of those areas. Certainly excited by the fact that we are definitely on, on track to break the 80% of our students moving on to two- and four-year colleges. Currently, I mentioned that we're about 66% of our seniors have been accepted into schools. We have three commitments to the military, that is growing as a result of a military fair that we offered at the high school. We're certainly hopeful that we get some commitments of students signing up for the upcoming college and career fair that we plan to have next week, and I know Diana will be talking about it a little bit more. And certainly expanding the opportunities for students, looking at other options other than the SATs for college admissions. We are offering for the first time the PLAN test this weekend, which is a practice for the ACT, with an ultimate goal of hosting ACTs at Portsmouth High School. Also included in that is a pretty large number of students that are participating in our spring sports. I think the official number is 403, which is almost 40% of our student body is participating in spring athletics, and that is just athletics. And that's due in large part to Mr. Stan, both the Lyfords, Mr. Stan Lyford, we have over 175 kids in track. And I know Kent, who is the starter, there was about six heats of the Boys 100, and he can attest to the fact that we have a lot of kids out there. Certainly, we wish the best of luck to our percussion ensemble that's traveling this week to the national, to the world championships once again. We are also very excited about the visit by the governor to Portsmouth High School to tout the efforts, and I think district-wide, that have been made to reduce our dropout rate to below 1%. It certainly was a great visit, our kids were truly outstanding as they took part in these discussions with the, with the governor. They were very candid, as they always are, and they really pointed to a lot of different things, not just one specific area, which made the difference in their lives. As we're moving on, as we're looking at the PLC, PLCs, we are still much in the process of gathering information, analyzing the student data, but I wanted to take a couple of moments to talk about some of the interventions and some of the updates that we have regarding that. Last time, I presented about a new initiative within the special ed department, and looking at beefing up essential skills of students, and that has morphed into a class that, or a program that's affectionately called sophomore skills, under the direction of Hannah Dool, our reading specialist at Center, really a math coach for, for us at the school, and BJ Files. We've identified 37 students who are taking part in this program. They were identified by using kneecap scores, their eighth-grade kneecap scores, and who are, are currently in study centers. These students are provided direct instruction, 45 minutes on Mondays, which is followed up throughout the week by using a new software program to us at the high school called Study Island. The teachers, as, as supplement to their instructions, assign different assignments utilizing this program, and they have to complete the tasks. We've seen some increases in their basic skills, excuse me, when we began this program, we pre-tested them using released kneecap data, we also used academic tests that are used in student services, and we found a very wide range of ability levels within those classes. We've been able to teach to some of the essential skills that some of the kids are lacking, but also with the use of Study Island, we've been able to prepare programs for these kids to move along at their own pace. We've seen some gains, but certainly, we're looking to more gains in the future. Really what been focused on in the very short time that we've been doing this is basic word structure, vocabulary, synonyms, antonyms, how to identify key information from text, math skills, problem-solving, and applications of knowledge. And once again, we are looking at increasing our student achievement through the use of this program. We've also found that students, many of the students are having these skills reinforced within their study centers, and we've seen great gains by those students posed to their cohorts that are receiving that additional support. So that is one of the things that we are certainly looking to change for fourth quarter and for next year. Also, it's been identified that we really need to reinforce these skills. We're looking at different programs of how to adjust and how to utilize the data that we receive, and put it into place in a more formalized way in some of the application-level classes that the students will be taking in their sophomore English and social studies classes. The next piece that I wanted to talk briefly about is our academic support centers as well. One minute remaining, I'm sorry. Academic support classes, really targeting these- Academic support classes, really targeting these kids for interventions. These are our non-coded students that receive additional academic supports within the school. Really setting some goals and some benchmarks for these students and following them through, utilizing Infant and Campus, which we find is a great tool of really keeping track, measuring, taking care of the social and emotional needs, as well as other things that kind of get in the way of instruction. Setting the goal that 90% of the students would receive grades of C or higher on the report cards, and really hammering those points home. To date, we've seen some results. Freshmen, about an 86% success rate, sophomores 89%, juniors 83%, seniors 84%. So we're working towards those benchmarks, so certainly getting 90% of the kids receiving no less than a C on their report cards in any academic period. Certainly moving forward from there, we've learned a lot of information that we're going to be sharing with, throughout the other additional study centers within the building. But really, I wanted to take a couple of moments to focus on some of these interventions that we've been developing and utilizing.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any brief questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back to update you on what's happening in CTE this semester. You do have a report in your packet highlighting a little bit about each one of our programs and courses, but there are a few things I'd like to elaborate a little bit upon. This semester, accounting is being offered at Portsmouth High School for the first time in a number of years. It's a project-running start class, which means students, if they pay $100 successfully complete the program, they receive three credits awarded from Great Bay Community College that is on their high school transcript they take with them, whether they go to Great Bay Community College or not. Out of the 24 students in the class, 17 have signed up for the program. So we're pretty excited about that. The culinary arts students competed in the New Hampshire Skills USA competition, and we're happy to report that the hot food competition, in the hot food competition, Chris Walker took a bronze medal. And in the commercial baking competition, Sarah Henderson also took a bronze medal. The early childhood education students participated in the FCCLA Spring Leadership Conference, that stands for Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. And Abby Ferris received a perfect score in her contest area. She had a gold medal. And according to the instructor, Joy Betts, it's the first time any of her students in the 30 years she's been going to the conference has ever gotten a perfect score, so good for her. They also collected seven gold medals, seven silver medals. 14 students are now eligible to go to California this summer for the National Leadership Conference. They are obviously now fundraising like crazy. They're very excited about that. There was a wonderful collaboration, again, this year for the second time between the welding program and the sculpting class. Bill Schaefer and Nancy Carey got together. They were, we were able to schedule their classes at the same time. And essentially what happened was the art students were paired with a welding student. The art students essentially commissioned the welding students to make a base for a sculpture that they were creating. It was a mythical winged creature. Last year, the art students drew the form, and the welding students had to create something from that. And it was a little bit difficult, so they took it up a little bit this year and had the art students actually create the form out of wire, a model, so to speak. And the welding students then went ahead, using bits and pieces of scrap metal, created the sculpture, gave it back to the art students who finished creating their sculpture. You can go to the Portsmouth Library, and they're on display there. And there's a few in the foyer here at our high school. It's been really, really fun to see that happen. I keep telling them, "I want one for my garden." It just seems like a great, fun creature to have in your garden. Speaking of the welding program, we have applied for two-year status with the Department of Education. And I did contact my project manager yesterday at the state and asked her where we're at, and she said it's under review. I had sent her before sending the full application in, I had sent her my first draft, and she was very supportive of the application itself and of the process. So we're very encouraged by that. And Jeff did mention the college and career fair. This is our second college and career fair. We have an intern who has been working very diligently on that project. It's a project that Shannon Grenier and Pam Wigan last year started, so we're very excited about that. It gives an opportunity for employers, apprenticeship programs, and colleges to come into the school during school hours and speak with students. Teachers sign up to bring their students down. It's also open, obviously, during lunchtime as well as during the break, so there's a lot of free time for students to come in and out. And regarding other upcoming events, the car show is May 17th. This will be Ken Summers' last year with the car show. It's been eight or nine years now, and he continues to up the ante on that. We'll be having our third annual CTE award ceremony on May 23rd, and we will be inducting 15 new students into the National Technical Honor Society. We just got all their certificates in today. We were able to give them their membership forms, and they're good to go now. They are eligible for scholarships, and they're the ones at graduation you'll see in the purple and white cords, which indicates that they are National Technical Honor Society students. I think I explained to you before, they have to have a 3.0 overall grade point average and a 3.5 grade point average in their career tech class. So that's what's happening in CTE.
Questions?
Thank you.
Kent?
Actually, I have to. Nice to see you tonight. First of all, just caught it, you said to be a National Honor Society, they, in their career tech classes, they have to have a 3.5.
3.5 in their CTE class, yes.
In their CTE classes. And yet, in their standard classes, it's a 3.0.
Correct.
Okay. And we still don't give them the same amount of credit for the classes. We ask them that they have to be at a higher standard for their classes. I'm just trying to get my hands around this. We've been here before, and yet, we won't give them the same weight when they take an architecture class, which is, sounds like art. And art gets the full credits, right? The full amount of credits. There's no deduction in an art class or a music class. I'm stymied that we're, you know, three, I hate to tell you, it's three directors later, I'm still having the same discussion.
I did, we did look into that after our last conversation, and the CTE classes are at a level three, college prep. I did an informal survey of the other directors and the other centers around the state, and some centers don't weigh their classes at all.
Correct.
They don't carry anything. The centers that do weigh their classes, weigh them as we do, as college prep-level classes. So where we're at in our school is very definitely at the same level and consistent across the state.
I don't care what the others do in the state. I want to make sure our students are encouraged to take this. If you look at employment right now, you know where they're getting employed. You're a plumber, you're an electrician, you're an architect, you probably go down and work on the middle school, you know? The bottom line is, is that, you know, I don't care what my neighbor's kid ever did. It was my kids that I always cared about. And I really think we've got to have a heart-to-heart discussion that, you know, there's a lot of things. We go to school too early, maybe, because we only, you know, we don't go in the summertime because, you know, we work on the old calendars and so forth. Bottom line is, this is something that I hope we can take on in the very near future, because my next question towards you is, are you up in enrollment for your students? I mean, we got that from Jeff, and I know that's the whole grouping of our students. Are you up for students going on in education beyond high school at this time? Do you have a number yet, Diane?
We're in the process of collecting the data of current college acceptances and where students have decided to go. Historically, we see more than 50% of our students go on to post-secondary of some sort, not directly into the workforce, perhaps an apprenticeship program, two-year or four-year schools. That's been pretty historic in terms of numbers. Some programs are higher than others.
But I guess what I actually like to know is, I'd like to know if there are breakdowns of institutions, two-years, trade schools, and then four-years. I'd like to know, are we seeing an increase of students in that grouping? Because the discussion out there is that there are more going from, you know, the more CTE-type classes into four-year schools. And they're getting, guess what? They're succeeding better because they've got the basic knowledge, whether it be in engineering, in architect, and drafting and so forth. They've got that experience to move on. Where other kids, they struggle with that because they never took advantage of it. Why didn't they take advantage of it? Because they didn't get the full credit load. Because people want to say they're going to make it, you know, in the top 10 of their class, or whatever. And we know it's very tough. It's nearly impossible to be in the top 10. And yet, the more successful bulk of students out there are ones that are taking cross-sections of classes. It's proven, it's out there. Is that a correct statement?
In response to that as well, we do have a little bit of data on the top 25 students or top 1 through 60. And of all of our classes, and we're not just talking the two-years, our programs, we're also talking about the introductory classes. Last year, 44% of students in the top 25 students did take our programs, classes. And the numbers of 26 through 60 rank, 58% of those students, at some point in their four-year career, did take one of our courses. And if you were to just break it out in broad sections, from number one to number 60, 57% of those students did take one of our classes over the four-year time at the high school. So we're able to do a nice catchment, and I understand what you're saying, and I certainly appreciate what you're saying. But we feel that a great number of our students at the high school, regardless of their level, the interest is there, they can at least take one of our introductory programs. Our hope, obviously, is if they take our introductory programs, that that will spark an interest in a career for them, and they'll go on, as you said, to get a leg up. In terms of an architecture student, and I'm sure I've spoken of my niece before, who wanted to apply to architecture school, didn't get in, and I'm certain that she would have with her grades, had she been able to take our architecture program. So I certainly appreciate your support and your concerns. We've been pretty, I do have to say, though, you know, Jeff and I have spent some time looking at these numbers and really trying to determine, you know, where we're at and what students we're truly seeing, or where our students are going. And we're feeling pretty confident about that. And with regard to the students going on to post-secondary, I know I've spoken to you before about the performance indicators that I received, the data I received from the state, that we have certain benchmarks that have to be met through the Carl Perkins Grant. And if we don't meet the benchmarks, then we have to write a targeted improvement, or I have to write the targeted improvement plan at the time that I write the grant. And we are consistently above what the state expects us to be at with regard to post-secondary placement, and we're very proud of that. And that's a testament to all of Portsmouth High School.
Carol, Tom?
Just, I just had a question as to who, so who makes that decision regarding what, how much weight a particular course, you, Ed?
The board.
Oh, I thought you were meaning you.
School board.
Okay, the school board. We decide that. So that's our decision within, well, I'm with Kent. I think we should look into that, at least consider it at some point, you know?
We'll set up a workshop and bring folks in and walk you through exactly what waiting's all about now. That's determined.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and just following on, just wanted your opinion was just how much of the waiting issue holds people back, students, from selecting a course? So, you know, here we're talking about wanting to change things, but just in your own opinion, is that a big barrier for students who might want to try something? And if so, you know, how big of an issue should we consider that to be?
I think that the numbers really bear out, that those students who, even at the top of their class, they're able to take the introductory classes. So they're, at least with regard to their schedule, there is the opportunity for them to take these electives, perhaps not the two-year programs. I think in the conversation Jeff and I had, we really came down to the thought that a student who is looking to go Ivy, for instance, there's a specific set of classes that student's going to take regardless. And that does not include a two-year CTE program. Are there plenty of students out in our school who benefit from our programs? Absolutely. So it becomes an issue of choice. I would say to you that when I first started teaching 16 years ago here in Portsmouth, we were weighted a one, and that had a tremendous impact on the students that we were able to attract. When we changed that, probably 10 years or more ago, in my own classroom, I saw a drastic difference in the students who were taking. That said, I had a number of students who were National Honor Society students, parents wanted them to go to the most competitive schools, and it was a real struggle for the student to not continue on the two-year program, but you had to understand that. If they were going to the most competitive schools, then there was a certain, they don't offer, for instance, culinary arts at the most competitive colleges and universities in this country. They do at the most competitive culinary schools, but not at those. So I think that we really felt that, you know, is an issue of choice, is a matter of choice, that our students who were at the very top of their class were probably not going to be attracted to our program. So I don't think that's the impediment.
Okay.
That's not my opinion.
No, I appreciate your candidness. Thanks.
I'd like to say everybody should be required to take a CTE class.
So do I.
For graduation. But that's my own commentary.
So I know Jeff wants to say something, at least it seemed it, but sure, but let me just finish up here, and then you can end it, and then we'll move on. So I would just say, I look forward to hearing a little bit more about the rationale for less than full credit. I'm really curious, so as we do this workshop. But I think paramount, because my daughter took an introductory course, and I would say that someone, maybe I need to listen better, but I think someone needs to do a better job of communicating to parents that in fact, there is a discrepancy, because I had no idea whatsoever. Not knowing whether it would have changed our decision, but I think parents need to understand that there's a difference in the credit count as these kids, you know, take these CTE courses. Jeff?
I'm just sorry. I think one of the other factors that you also have to consider is the time commitment that is devoted by these kids that are in the two-year programs. We're talking to, a block of study blocked out of their, all the other courses that they have to take over a two-year timeframe. It is a fairly large commitment. We have students that aren't able to get some AP courses because of, they can't take all of them at the same time. So there are some choices, and I think that's one of the reasons why Diane really instituted the Career and Technical National Honor Society to award those kids that are making that firm commitment for those two-year programs. It is a significant time commitment in any scheduled school, but certainly in block as well. And rewarding those attitudes and really sticking to it and exploring this as a career of choice for them down the road. And I think Diane puts it great. It's either, yeah, I'm definitely in for architecture, or at the end of the two years, maybe not, architecture's maybe not the best thing for me. I may want to pick up a hammer and build them rather than draw them. That's what I got from being the son of an architectural drawing teacher growing up. I certainly learned that I'd much rather bang the nails than to draw the lines, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're totally out of sync here with our agenda, so if you can bear with me. We do have another person sitting in the audience who is waiting. So why don't we just proceed from where we are? We'll hear Mr. Bartlett, then we'll go to consideration of the charter, the booster clubs, and then we'll deal with the parcel, well, we can move that first. And then we'll jump back to the beginning and do our presentation on evaluation. We'll just keep going, and we'll get the people out of the room.
Okay, thank you. The month-end report for March was included in your packet, and I emailed, and you had it at your place, setting the narrative. Basically, there is not much to report in differences from last month, quite frankly. We, you know, overall, the general fund was like 2% ahead of where it was the previous year last month. We're at 1.7. All the variances in salaries and benefits, you know, we're tracking as we expected. They seem to be in line. I am proud of the fact that our administrators have worked very hard on our initiative to try to control the substitute line, as we're approximately $127,000 ahead of where we were last year. So that effort is paying off. The expenditure, you know, level budgets in the various departments, as I've explained, every month, they all vary because, you know, the needs vary, the books cycle through, the supplies cycle through, and then there are some people who get nervous about having to freeze every year and everything. to freeze every year and everything else. So they sometimes accelerate their purchasing to make sure they have everything in. I think that everything is, the way it's showing right now, I believe that I will be able to manage, you know, what we have to work with between now and the end of the year and come out on the right side of the budget process. But I did want to point out that each year we try to make refinements, and, you know, last year we had some really good advanced savings in energy. Part of that was because we were trying to be conservative about how we adjusted the budget as opposed to history. And so we've done it again for 2011, and as you can see, the difference between what we budget and what we actually use is getting tighter. And so far, without any extreme or expanded weather, we've been okay. And so we'll just keep hoping the weather cooperates and, you know, but every time we do that, we sort of reduce our possible flexibility for covering fluctuations that we don't control. But by and large, everything is well within the total expenditure lines for the year, so I think we're going to be okay.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. You're welcome. All business, we've done the school nutrition program, the facilities used, and then consideration and approval of a letter to city charter commission.
Yes, so you, I prepared a draft letter on behalf of Mitch and the school board. I know there's one error in it, it should say SAU 50, not SAU 52, so we will correct that, but that's what we're suggesting be submitted to the charter commission if we have it right.
Yes, Rebecca.
Her name is spelled incorrectly.
Where are we?
That also needs to be changed.
Okay, thank you.
Good pick-up. Any other, did we capture the conversation? So I guess we'll take a motion to, so everyone could agree, so we can feel comfortable sending it on.
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm alone. Thank you. Okay, so we'll send that on to Assistant Mayor Nancy Norvaline Clayber. Okay, and new business.
Yes, the first item is, I guess, consideration and approval of booster clubs. Mr. Bartlett?
Well, on a yearly basis, we, you know, we send out a cell survey of information requests to all the booster clubs, and then we bring them to you like we would teach the nominations in a way for, you know, for tacit approval. And so you have before you the list this year, and I think based on our meeting last week, there were a couple that had listed here that we didn't have complete information on, but I know that we, when we had our booster meeting last week, I was able to touch base with two out of the three, and the third group has also assured us in at least one phone call that the information was forthcoming.
It's been received.
And it has been received, great. So it came in in between printing out this list, so we have all booster clubs present and accounted for.
Okay. Kent?
I'll move that we approve it and then open for discussion.
Okay.
Just, in regards to me, need a second.
Any, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And in that move, when the clarification of the other boards come in. We meet on an annual basis, this was done a number of years ago, over, getting on probably 10 years, I think we started around 2001, 2002, to begin the process, to meet state regulations. But this has also always been a goal of past boards, is that we keep it as a, also, a good period of time for discussion with the groups and so forth. And I want to thank Leslie Kane, because we have had some issues about evaluation, kind of goes into the theme of tonight, we're teachers evaluations, and we got some excellent feedback from the groups. One of the things, and Jeff was here tonight, is that it is felt by both Russ Wilson and by Jeff Collins, so that certain issues can be discussed beforehand, along with Steve Bartlett trying to keep a running tab a little bit better. Not that Steve may need to be there for every group, but at least referral, is that they would like to see this probably happen prior to each season, which, again, this would be an offshoot between the two groups, the athletics and arts and the yearly booster club meeting. So again, we had a great meeting, we did an exercise to get feedback on how we're doing. Attendance was very small this year, it was the first day the sun had been out in I don't know how long, and I think we were up against other items going on that night. But it is important that we recognize we're unique to the schools amongst our neighbors and so forth, other high schools especially, to have so many parent groups to support these. As I always say, we have the best dressed kids because, you know, it's almost a double-edged sword. These parents groups go out there and raise money, whether they be in the band, and again, this is not just athletics, this is everything. They look fantastic. It doesn't come out of our budget. Booster groups pay for this, and I don't think that's always so well-recognized. I think we, you know, tonight we have on the percussion, world percussion assembly that we're approving. We don't pay for that. That is paid for by the booster groups. And again, I've always had a goal that we've had, one major booster group, this sort of gets us there, that they can get together on a yearly basis, but I do think I would take into consideration that meeting prior to each season, and again, not just strictly maybe on athletics, but to look at it, that that's done. But we do try to stay in compliance, and I appreciate Steve's office by presenting on a yearly basis. You've got to imagine, when Peter Torry had this, I often give the story, there were something like 56, 57 booster groups out there. I forget, what are you down to, 23?
25.
25. So over half of them were either combined or put in their proper positions.
Wow, thank you. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Okay.
The next item is the addition to the agenda, and I'll share a memorandum that was presented to me from Rick Tainer at the planning office. The issue essentially is that the owners of a lot at 54 Rogers Street, which is right behind the middle school.
Oops, sorry.
Basically have discovered that their property description did not agree with the survey that was conducted as part of the middle school project. Basically, it shows that the property boundary actually goes through the property owner's shed and driveway at the, you know, where the fence is and, you know, kind of the service area is behind the middle school project. So I think the, between the city and the owners of the property, they've been working to resolve the situation. They met with the city attorney, the planning director, and thought that the best solution would be for the owners of the property to formally acquire this small strip of land that's in question. It really is about, I guess, seven to eight feet wide, it's about 75 feet long, and so the total square footage is some 641. So it comes before you this evening because you're, it's part of the middle school property currently, and they are suggesting that it's under your care and control, and that you need to take a motion and essentially send it off to the city council. And then the city council can in turn, you know, make the proper resolution of the issue. Clearly, we don't need it for our school purposes. The property line isn't going to change, the fence is going to be replaced right there. Tom, are you making fun of my hand gestures? Get yourself under control, please.
Thank you. I needed that.
I want to know what, you know, what's going on that end.
So I'll stop moving my hands.
Or move them more and broader.
And ask essentially that the board vote to determine that the land is no longer needed for school, public school purposes, and can transfer its care and control to the city under RSA 199 for subsection 2.
So moved. Second.
Yes.
Motion's been made.
Any discussion on this? Yes, Kent?
I support it, I appreciate Mr. Hess and, you know, his due diligence to make sure it's downright. The issue, I want to make sure that's on the table because I have pushed it, I know the superintendent, I've stopped Steve Bartlett, and I know that also the city attorney's office. This is not singular to this piece of property, this property line. Chuck Doleak's law firm, and I forget all the different lawyers, and I don't know how far that line goes. They have asked for the same consideration, that the fence is the fence, and they kind of, the fence has been there longer, probably about the same time the school, you know, in the 30s and so forth, went up to have a distinction of that. Why there was a seven-foot or eight-foot difference on that, we'll probably never know. I think they're all well-buried that made those decisions. But there was, there is a discrepancy that does not just end at the Hess property, it goes all the way, believe from what the discussions that I've heard, to the church, I think. I think that's about where the line may differ and not be quite as different, I think because you're onto the Pierce Trust property there. But again, there are other abutters at this consideration, I feel should have, if we're going to do it for one, I have no problem doing it for all, I don't believe there's any plans. I know that Chuck Doleak has requested it for his abutment that comes back there, I don't know if anybody has. I know I've talked to the superintendent, passed the information I had to both Steve and the superintendent, and I know that they have talked to Bob Sullivan's office. I have not heard of anything like this coming down for those other properties at this time.
No.
But again, I want to make sure for our clearance that this is not the only property that's in question at this time.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Actually, it's a roll call.
Should be a roll call?
Happy to do a roll call.
Because why?
And it's okay to have, because it's financial in nature, because it's giving up.
Sitting up, sending property back to the city.
Yeah, it's not, you know, it's not a small item, if we're ever questioning it. By the way, hand gestures are good because all Frenchmen, and I swear for our, we use a lot of hands, it's okay. You can belong to us.
I'll call the roll. Carol Chelman?
I'm going to decline from voting, I have a conflict of interest.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Mann?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Hayward?
Yes.
To vote.
Very good. Made you wait all that time, Bill. Sorry.
When did the renovations start?
Tomorrow.
You going to compete with the middle school?
Okay, sure, we got to do it. So we have a presentation by the superintendent about the teacher evaluation, so would everyone like to take just like a two or three-minute break?
So moved.
Very good.
Did you say a break till, what, two weeks?
Two, three-minute break.
Oh, two minutes, okay.
Next week.
Okay, so we'll continue with the agenda. Actually, we're totally out of order, but press special presentations tonight. Mr. McDonough?
Thank you. I'd like to take a little bit of time and update the board on our efforts as a school community to implement a supervision and evaluation system throughout our schools. We've just completed a year-one implementation and hope to share with you this evening some of our successes, some of the challenges that remain, and next steps as we move forward in the 2011-12 school year. Last year, you may recall, the school board adopted a policy that called for all professional staff to be evaluated at least once per year. And I would share with you that in the teacher's contract, it aptly makes clear that professional staff evaluations have three key purposes. First is to aid individuals to grow professionally. The second is to encourage high standards in the field of education. And three is to enhance the quality of professional performance amongst the teaching corps. Last year, the board approved the teacher job description, which was modeled on Charlotte Danielson's framework. I think everyone in the room recognizes the complexity and demands placed upon a teacher. This framework aims to describe all of teaching, not only what occurs in the classroom, but what also takes place beyond the four walls for a professional teacher, be it planning for instruction, interacting with colleagues on a district committee or in their PLC, communicating with families, or engaging students in learning. This framework, we believe, is broad enough to be useful for teachers who are new to the profession, as well as enhancing any veteran's skill level. Danielson provides four key domains: planning and preparation, the classroom environment, instruction and professional responsibilities. And the text also provides rubrics on a four-point scale that can serve as the structure for professional discussion and genuine improvement amongst teachers. While the four, while there are four domains, there are also 22 components from which a coherent body of knowledge and skill can become the focus for teacher growth. And while I don't want to mislead you, teaching is clearly a holistic endeavor, I think the components of this framework can serve as a diagnostic tool to understand how a teacher's performance can be strengthened over time. So last year, a working group from the teachers' union met with a group of administrators to outline the process. Throughout it all, they were insistent that any system be meaningful for teachers and doable for administrators. So while probationary non-tenued teachers undergo a more intensive observation process, all continuing contract staff follow a calendar outline that actually bridges two school years. The evaluation sequence is April 1, which just began, till March 31 of next school year. And that, I think, historically is to be in line with when the state demands that contracts be issued. The process finds administrators gathering information through three-minute walkthroughs on a regular basis. And then it found administrators in January through March, asking teachers to complete a self-assessment on the instrument that I actually provided for you in your packet, and then meeting with the administrator to compare notes and to have a reflective dialogue about improving one's practice. Teachers also were asked to complete a feedback form where they shared their efforts as part of a PLC team. We actually, on that right-hand side, asked them to discuss the student data they looked at, to share the SMART goal and the team activities that they engaged in, to share with us how the team monitored student progress and celebrated success, and then to really share growth as an educator over the past year and outline their steps for professional growth. And I have to say, I took the opportunity to read all 250-some-odd evaluations, and this was the most impressive piece, I think, that teachers actually brought to the table. They were exhaustive in sharing their feedback, and I thought I learned a lot about teachers just from reading how they responded to that feedback form. So last week, we surveyed teachers and asked administrators to share warm and cool feedback on this first year of implementation. Administrators saw it as a process that encouraged reflection, that actually highlighted teacher strengths, was clearly respectful of teacher work, and on the whole, I thought they thought it was time well spent. Staff appreciated time with their administrators as well. They enjoyed the self-assessment process, and I think had truly valued the process overall. When we asked for cool feedback, things they might change, or things that didn't go so well, there was clearly anxiety about the new process, knowing what the instrument was, not knowing what the rubrics might have been, or how they could use that to see where they self-assessed. I think, you know, you have to act your way into new processes and beliefs, and so that was, that was some cool feedback we received. But I think we've gone through that initial painful year. Sometimes we got caught up in numbers. There are four points on the rubric, and some administrators might have used decimal points, others might have used whole numbers. I think there were some calibration issues that existed, and folks clearly valued the narrative and the feedback far more than attaching a number to it. The other piece was, came back to us, is clearly there's a need to be more faithful to implementing the three-minute walkthrough. And while we looked at curricular and instructional decisions teachers might make, there was a desire to see some better connection between the four domains and Danielson's framework and what administrators are looking at as they go through the three-minute walkthrough process, to kind of dovetail that a little bit better. I think all recognized at the end of the day that the feedback was what was most critical, and, you know, largely, I think, folks valued the process. So evaluations were completed on 254 staff. On average, each administrator at their building level had about 30 appraisals to complete. If you look at the various schools, Don Darrow, we have one principal, 29 appraisals completed. New Franklin, 30. At PHS, there were three administrators that were able to split that and share those responsibilities. Little Harbor had 35. And actually, at the middle school, 52 with two administrators, that might be a little bit less. But on average, there are about 30 appraisals to do this process annually. And I would share with you just quickly the aggregate data, which is just a compilation of all 254 in those four domains. It suggests a staff that is beyond proficient in each of the four key categories. So as we begin to reflect on this year's initial implementation, I think it's important to keep first and foremost that the purpose of an evaluation system is to improve instructional practice. I think each and every one of us needs feedback in order to grow. And in reading the appraisals, I was struck by how meaningfully administrators and teachers engaged in that process. And I want to share with you, I'm very proud of the hard work the administrators put in, because it's a very labor-intensive process. And I'm proud of the staff for the goodwill and the efforts they brought forward to improve their practice. So from the outset, we wanted a process that was meaningful, manageable, and doable. And I think now with this baseline data, I think we can look at a more tiered approach, one that's perhaps a bit more strategic, a bit more diagnostic, given where we find our staff. As you can see, you know, when we disaggregate the data a little bit, you can see that some 35% or some 90 teachers earned 3.5s or higher, which is to suggest they're highly efficient, highly effective staff and are operating very, very well. And so a one-size-fits-all model probably isn't appropriate there. And less than 1% of some 19 teachers earned ones or twos somewhere along the four key domains, and that suggests another level of engagement with their administrators. So basically, over the next few months, we hope to reconvene and expand the working group that initially put this together, and we would be proposing some adjustments. One of the things we want to do, as I said, is explicitly connect the walkthroughs to the four domains. And I think we need to implement that walkthrough process with fidelity. We'll want to expand opportunities for our high-performing teachers, so that they can maybe step outside the cycle and take advantage of some other supervisory options we may be able to afford them. And then, because it is so labor-intensive, I think we need to consider a two- or three-year cycle. I mean, principals worked hard, and I don't know if it's doable to evaluate 254 teachers each and every singular year. And finally, I think we need, one of the pieces we heard is we need to complete job descriptions for those instructional specialists that are beyond the classroom teacher, which is to suggest nurses, counselors, speech and language, special educators, et cetera, and maybe make a modest adjustment to how we do that. Basically, in domain, in Charlotte Danielson's four domains, she changed as domain three instruction to basically delivery of services. But we can have a conversation about that. But in sum, I think, in fact, it's been, it's been a good year of implementation. I think we're acting our way into a new practice and some beliefs, and essentially, the first year has gone, gone pretty well. So I know it's late, and you have multiple questions for me. I'm happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Tom, and Ann, and Kent?
No, I'll just dive in to say, I mean, this is great, great work, and it's exciting to just take a look at the fact that, you know, it is well-received, and that the engagement process was some that people really felt was really beneficial. I mean, that's, that really sort of speaks to the fact that, you know, evaluation processes aren't all bad, you know, that there's something to be had from it, and it's, you know, really that we're trying to improve people. You know, one of the questions I was just going to ask about, you know, taking and looking at the evaluation process over a number of years, you know, you saying maybe, you know, two to three years, is, is that, do we lose something by spreading it out? Or is, are there steps in between that maybe require less work, knowing full well that there's, you know, I think of my own evaluative process, my own job where, you know, there's a quarterly process, and then maybe a little bit more robust annual. So maybe taking something like that. Can you speak to that at all, of what you think might be appropriate?
Well, I think, I think a little bit, you know, one of the things is that if it's singularly the principal providing the feedback, if there are already high-performing teachers, there's ways to engage others, either in, you know, kind of some videotaping processes or perhaps some collegial observations. In other words, others can share in providing teachers' feedback on their practice. We already engaged in a collective professional learning community anyways. That would allow principals, I think, more time to kind of focus or hone in on other areas where, where staff, new staff, or staff that don't quite measure up, need more time. And I, and I just don't think it, I think principals felt like they could have spent even more time with teachers and gone through a more elaborate process in providing feedback. But I, currently, the policy says staff will be, have an evaluation annually.
Yeah, and it was one of those things where, you know, it's more, it's not my opinion, it's just one of those things where you're kind of like used to, you know, annual, and I'm open to suggestion not that.
So I'd like to take that back to the group, and rather than answer it singularly here tonight.
Yeah. And then just my last question is just, I don't know if it's part of the PLCs, but the, what I would say, peer evaluation, where do you see that fitting in, to where that, maybe it's part of this rigorous process that you're describing, where you're actually, you know, putting rubrics down for people? Where do you see peer evaluation coming in? And I know it's being done on a PLC level, but it's, it's not this.
Well, we just have to, we have to present that as an option or a possibility for staff. I mean, we have to think that through, and what that looks like. You know, there are two pieces, right? We talk about supervision. Supervision is ultimately the improving of a teacher's practice.
Right.
And then we have evaluation, which kind of kills it, right? We put numbers on a paper, and we sign off, and we send it into the CUME file. So, you know, we're going to continue to work to improve practice, supervision, and we're going to, and I don't think it can be singularly the role of the, the administrator has to do the evaluation piece.
Right.
But then we have to engage our PLC groups to provide one another. It does go on, Tom. But I don't know if we do this in a formal way, and teachers set goals, who can, they can just go off and, and, you know, be faithful to some systematic process and also be improving their practice.
Right. Because, I mean, because there's one side where, you know, one person is holding the power of, you know, that number.
Right.
Versus saying it's a blended model to say, you know, my peer group, you know, thinks this, and that has some component to it. So that maybe adds some credibility or validity, and that's, that's, that's my only comment.
It's a great point.
Yeah.
Ann?
Ed, I had a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
The principals, have they or will they receive some staff development in terms of being able to really perform meaningful and trustworthy and consistent evaluations?
Well, they haven't received, I mean, we didn't provide any specific training beyond the Danielson, excuse me, the model we employed for walkthroughs. We spent a little bit of time talking about that and what one would be looking for. It was like a five-step process. But in terms of this instrument, we'll come back and we'll work administratively, because there was a lot of desire to kind of calibrate things, as I said. I mean, there were some who used just whole numbers, there were some who used decimals, et cetera. At the end of the day, I think they, teachers completed there, they did the instrument, they had put numbers and written narrative text about it, and then they sat down and had a reflective conversation about it, in areas that, but no formal training in, is the short answer to date.
Okay. And when the teachers filled out their instrument, they had the rubric for the Danielson?
Well, I think that's one area that they may not, they, they had the domains and they had the components, but they didn't see the rubrics per se, and I think that's an area we need to go back and kind of flesh out.
Right.
So that they can really look at the rubric and rate themselves against that.
Because as part of that process, where you showed that teach 35% had, you know, high scores on the domains and that kind of thing.
Yes.
And then others maybe weak in a particular domain, I mean, that may be the part where the administrator steps in and says, okay, well, these are the people that we'd like to work on specific domains, and set goals in those domains to strengthen those weaknesses.
And, you know, we knew year one would be, you know.
Right.
It's year one implementation, it's an iterative process.
Right.
You know, we have to move and move along. So you're right on the money, though, and we need to, that clearly came across when we got the feedback from administrators about sharing those rubrics.
And, and the teachers will come to feel more comfortable in that feedback, because I think that all of them want to improve their skills, whether they're in that 35% or not, they still want to, you know, ratchet it up. So, you know, I think that that's, this is just.
You're absolutely right.
Really necessary and a good step in the right direction. Thank you.
Kent?
Yeah. Again, I'm glad we're making progress on something that's, you know, long overdue, and I appreciate the time and effort into it. Couple things, one thing you caught me with is that this can't fit all, I mean, 254 of the union members under the teacher's contract, is that a correct statement? So.
That somebody were evaluated.
Yeah, and so you have, you know, as you pointed out, the counselors and anybody, nurses, librarians, so this doesn't fit everybody. So I think there has to be a second branching of more designer-type areas, because all four other areas may need some, one, one evaluation may not cover them. The tier process that you talk, I'd be interested to see where, and, you know, have us kept up to date, because I think that's where we'll start to see growth, and the tier process may be the manner in which you handle it on, you know, in between the odd years or something, or however you do that. But I hope we can evaluate every year. Then, the next two things I have to ask for is that we know that Ed McDonough gets evaluated, the nine of us do that here, we know the teachers get it now, an evaluation. How about that other group? The administrators?
Talking administrators?
Yeah, where do we stand?
Well, I evaluated them last year, so I modeled the process for them.
Okay.
We use much the same process, and we're in the midst of doing that right now, so at the May meeting, I'll be moving the administrators to you for a contract renewal, assuming a suitable evaluation.
And again, we'd be curious, not necessarily just in the numbers, but, you know, what was the process for, you know, process improvement is something that we all need on a daily basis, and again, how we evolve. And then lastly, as you know, when we had the meeting last week, if this is now approved and the teachers, I really see no hurdles for us not to have a separate one done for those for extracurricular activities. Obviously, that includes the, the sports, but it also may include the band instruction, anybody who's getting instr-
who's getting instructional information, you know, this is a tool that those department heads can go ahead and use, whether it be Russ or whoever's, you know, running the band and the performing arts and so forth. Again, just so people are improving, and there may be times it's opportunity to say, you know, career paths need to be looked at. But again, I think if we're doing it at the teacher level, I see little reason not to bring it to the level of the extracurricular activities.
Great. Thank you. Ann?
Great job. I appreciated that information. In fact, I'm hoping that we could get the information from your PowerPoint.
Certainly. I'll send it as an attachment tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Yep.
I especially like the fact that they're systematic and specific three-minute walkthroughs. I think that really gives the principals a chance to see what's happening in the class, things that oftentimes they really don't know are happening. So I especially like the three-minute walkthroughs, and I think it sounds very promising. Why is he doing that?
Okay.
Oh, he's not hearing me. Too late.
Okay. Did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Carol, okay.
Just very much just a comment, not a criticism of any sort--
Sure.
--just a comment. I'm just wondering about, you know, information from parents as to what their opinions are, and I don't know the answer on that issue, but I, you know, I'm sure you realize, and I just know since the experience that I've had since I've been part of the school system as a parent, is that parents are very opinionated as to who's the best teacher, and there's a lot of conversation, and I know myself, if I wanted to find out who the best teacher was, which I usually try to do, I do ask other parents. And the people who've had several children go through the school system seem to know more what they're talking about than others. But on the other hand, sometimes parents aren't really necessarily the most reliable. But I think that it would be really unfortunate to not give great consideration to what parents think in this process. You know, and I think about it, like with lawyers, a lot of times lawyers are evaluated by other lawyers. But most firms find that it's better to ask jurors what they thought of the lawyers, rather than asking lawyers what they thought. So, you know, the idea of asking peers, yes, to extent, but I think you can also, you have to be careful of that, too. So just those comments.
So I'll just add, oh, sorry, Claire, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed, I have a question and a concern. If a staff member feels that they feel that they have not been evaluated adequately enough, do they have the option of seeking a mentor to upgrade their skills at all?
So procedurally, what would happen is if they might disagree with the evaluation that's submitted by the administrator, they sign off on the form, which simply means that they've read it and been presented it. They don't necessarily have to agree to it, and they're always free to attach or send any additional information to the evaluation. So teachers are always able to, you know, send, send, I guess, a rebuttal of sorts or a clarification or something like that, and in a few isolated cases, that happened this time around. So.
So I just have two quick, two quick questions. So, well, one is actually a comment. I kind of, I agree with the notion of multi-tiered evaluations, peer evaluation, adding another voice to the process, somebody who has a different perspective. And the other thing is, so the less than 1 percent who earned ones or twos, so what's in place for them?
So in some cases, I think we've moved to a different process, i.e. an improvement plan, as you might have recalled from the policy you adopted a year ago.
Right.
In some other cases, we're still having conversations about that, but clearly, that targets an area that the administrator wants to see a turnaround in performance and wants to assist and help, be it planning, instruction, management, what have you. So I think all of those are being addressed.
So these less than ones and twos are not new teachers, these are teachers who, that's a different process than the first few years?
Yes, it's across all the teachers that were evaluated, it's not just necessarily new teachers that earn that.
So this could be new teachers who earn this--
Yes.
--as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. So the last thing on the agenda, which hopefully we can do before 10 o'clock so we don't have to vote to stay here longer, is a committee report from the JBC, if there's anything to speak of tonight.
Meeting tomorrow night.
Do you want to address that?
I can give a quick update if you should like. We met last week, and we're meeting again tomorrow night. And the main focus of last week's meeting, and again, tomorrow night's meeting, is to work through the value management process so that we're able to get GMP III. And what we call GMP III is the Guaranteed Maximum Price for the Middle School Parrot Avenue complex as part of the process. First GMP, of course, was the football field resurfacing, second is the replacement of Alumni Field on Granite, on Granite Street. I'm happy to say that all our federal permits were approved and have been received, ready for posting and recording. We had some discussions with the New Hampshire Department of Historic Preservation and the EPA, and we, I'm happy to say that we have a memo of understanding that it has been executed by the Department of Education and the City of Portsmouth and the School Department, so we're ready to go forward in that respect. And so we're working on GMP III tomorrow night again, and we plan on having breaking grounds sometime this month, so we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony that we'll let everybody know about. I think that's pretty much it.
Okay. No questions? Okay.
Just an update on committee report from the REC board, goes sort of along with the JBC. The REC board met last week on Wednesday, great lengthy discussion. We've had a number of people wanting to name the Granite Street ballfield area that is now out there or will be out there. And they have proposed to send to city council for city councils, because it's only an advisory board, that, you know, trying to, and there will be a subcommittee that will name maybe other things out there, but to allow respect for the current Alumni Field, which was named after the last high school grouping that was downtown, that is why it was called Alumni, and then Wentworth. So they have pushed or recommended to the city council that it be known as the Alumni Wentworth School, meaning that it's not for Alumni Wentworth, but the Alumni Wentworth Ballfield. It also will help in the regards that, if you remember, one of the state statutes was is that you, because you were taking down a historic area, one of the things they wanted to make sure is that it was always remembered that there was something there, so leaving the name Wentworth in it would cover those grounds for legal purposes.
Thank you. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.